I now declare that the Plano City Council preliminary open meeting is reconvened in an open session, that all council members are present, with the exception of Council Member Homer, Council Member Smith. Where did Council Member Horn go? Council Member Horn, but they're really here. So our first item on the agenda, preliminary agenda, is consideration action resulting from executive session. Our next item is personnel reappointments, Community Relations Commission.
Mr. Mayor, Council Member Horn and I have conferred about this, and we would like to reappoint Priscilla Brown, Magesh Kandavadivel, Johnny Singh, and Samita Voiku, leaving one vacancy, and I believe it looks like also an interim position, and I will so move. The Council Member Horn is right there.
All right. I have a motion as second. Please, please vote with your hand. Motion as second to approve the Community Relations Committee appointments. All in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Next item is the Comprehensive Monthly Financial Report for 2023, June of 2023. Hi Denise.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Denise Tackey. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Plano, and I'm here to present the June 2023 Comprehensive Financial Report. So this slide represents our revenues compared to budget by fund. The General Fund has revenues of $282.2 million for the first nine months of the fiscal year. This represents 91.3% of the total annual budget. The Water and Sewer Fund has $140.5 million in revenues, which represents 73.7% of the total annual budget. This slide is our expenditures compared to budget by fund. The General Fund has expenditures of $213.2 million for the first nine months. That represents 70.9% of the total annual budget. The Water and Sewer Fund has expenditures of $108.1 million, and that represents 69.4% of the total annual budget. This slide represents the net change in fund balance for the past three years. In the General Fund, for the first nine months of the fiscal year, the fund balance has increased by $38.9 million. This is over $7 million lower than it was at this time last year. The Water and Sewer Fund balance has decreased by $949,000. This is better than prior year, when we had a fund balance decrease of $1.4 million. Environmental Waste Services Fund has decreased by $553,000, and Municipal Drainage Fund has decreased by $1.1 million. This is our General Fund revenues. They're higher than the prior year by $12.2 million. There was a decrease in property tax revenue of $372,000. However, sales tax revenues increased by $5.4 million over the first nine months of the prior fiscal year. Our franchise fee revenues were also up by $1.3 million due to increased usage of gas and electricity. Our interest income increased by $6.2 million due to rising interest rates and the mark-to-market adjustment that we're required to do for GASB 31. When we look at our General Fund expenses, they're higher than the prior year by $19.9 million. Personnel costs increased by $10.1 million due to the 3.5% salary adjustment effective October 2022. Costs for materials and supplies also increased $971,000 due to additional weapon purchases for new police recruits and equipment for fire special teams operations. The Health Claims Fund has a decrease in fund balance of about $3 million. This is mostly due to an increase in expenses. Again, this is a trend we're seeing with the Health Claims Fund right now. We've had several large claimants. The Fund has a fund balance of $3.7 million in June. And then we've, we've also evaluated our intent to increase premiums as well this year to provide and provide some additional plan changes that we're hope, hope will provide some relief here. This is our unemployment rates. In March, we're at 3.6%, and they remain the same in June at 3.6%. This is our sales tax for the month of July. They're up compared to the prior year by 10.14%. Overall, our sales tax numbers are looking very good. Here's some real estate market recap. This shows the number of days on the market was 28 days in March. That's compared to 19 days in June, and the percent of asking was at 100% both in March and June. The median selling price for a home in Plano was at $500,000 in March compared to $542,000 in June, so it's an increased sum. And the price per square foot in March was at $219 compared to $224 in June. Our hotel occupancy tax is up $1.4 million compared to the prior fiscal year. And then this is our equity and treasury pool. It's our investment portfolio and how much of the investments are owned by each fund. Our largest amount of this is going to be in our bond funds.
I'm sorry Denise, without the labels, it's hard to tell what's what.
Yeah, the bond, the bond funds are the 36%. And we really did run through this this afternoon, and the numbers all showed up, so.
What are the next few biggest, please?
The, the next, hang on a second, let me find the chart.
Sure.
It's usually going to be the General Fund and the. I don't see it on here. Okay, here it is. Capital Projects are 36%. The Enterprise Funds are the yellow, they're 14%. Special Revenue Funds are the purple, and they're at 17%. Internal Service Funds are blue, and they're at 10%. And then the General Fund is 15%. And this is our investment portfolio maturities as well. And as you can see, that, that has dropped the labels as well. And the largest portion is the one-year and under, and that's 36.81%. The rest of it, it's just, it's laddered out, so. And then this is our portfolio diversification. And then that just shows we're highly diversified. The majority of that, the 42.9% is going to be, that's going to be municipal bonds. The rest of them are just a variety of, of different investments. No one part of our portfolio can be greater than 50%, so we're widely diversified. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I apologize for the presentation.
That's okay. Thank you Denise. Any questions for Denise? Thank you. Our next item is short-term rental study update. Christina Day.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Executives. I have a brief update for you on short-term rentals. So just some background for those who may not be aware of where we are with this project. This was really initiated in October of 2022, when Council directed staff to do three things: prepare a registration program, implement a process to consider ordinance changes, and utilize a process similar to Arlington, Texas. We had a joint work session, or meeting really, with the Council and P&amp;Z, and Council adopted an interim ban on short-term rentals in May. Then, also in May, Council appointed a short-term rental task force, and we continue to work on the registration ordinance. So we've been working on data and outreach. Deckard Technology is our data provider. It is a third-party. We've been working on verifying that data and incorporating it with the Public Safety Communication System, or 911 is known to many people, that computer-aided dispatch system. So we're looking at the police data. We're providing a more accurate analysis of that calls-for-service data. So looking at actually when people call in and report an issue, how that relates to an address that we've identified as a short-term rental using, again, the third-party short-term rental data. So correlating those two data sources. We've presented that at the July Task Force meeting, as well as the August Open House. We've also been using a third-party outreach coordinator, Gap Strategies. They've held two meetings so far with the task force: a June 29th meeting and a July 18th meeting. There was also an in-person open house event held last week on Wednesday at Event 1013 in, here in downtown Plano. And that continues as a virtual open house. That's still ongoing through Wednesday, August 30th, so we thought this was a great opportunity to do this update, because we can promote, hopefully, for everyone watching the council meeting, the open house. It's available at the project website, planostr.com, and I have some data available for you on that a little bit later in the meeting. But I wanted to point out that the next steps here are the Short-Term Rental Task Force will reconvene. We're working on, again, collecting this data over, through the next couple of days, through the online platform. We'll report that out at, again, the next task force meeting, which will be September the 13th. And then that will be used to prepare a findings report for this council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those will be coming to you in October. We then, hopefully, will have identified some details about the problems that are existing in the community, and then focusing on potential solutions in November through February. So we're hoping that this study timeline will conclude with any kind of ordinance amendments before the expiration of that interim ban on May 15th. That's our goal. So here again is the website for the open house. So as of this morning, online, we had 732 entries into the virtual open house. Of those 230, people had actually answered the polling questions, and then we had 61 additional comments. At the in-person open house last week, we had 109 attendees, and those do not include members of staff or the task force or consulting team. Those are others that attended. We had 53 individuals answer the polling questions that we proposed, as well as 18 general comments. So we're looking forward to seeing the details on the, these responses and presenting that information to the task force. With that, I conclude my presentation and am available for questions you might have.
Thanks Christina. Any questions? Council Member Williams.
Thank you very much Christina. Just two questions first. You noted that the study is to conclude in time for any proposed ordinance amendments to be made prior to the expiration of the ban. How much in advance, roughly, how much runway would there be to actually craft the amendments and consider them and potentially table them?
Right. I think on our timeline, we have a, through February is really Phase Two, so that will give us March, April, and May to, we're hoping to really start kind of in the background, working on things as we can identify the problems through this phase, then hopefully we can start working in, in the background on solutions. I think we've heard a lot from the public about ideas, and so we can start with the understanding we have of the ordinances that we have in place. We know kind of what tools are possible, and so drafting some things and preparing to bring things forward. So I think we can do some back, background work and be prepared when things end to have things kind of ready to go.
Okay, thank you. And next, maybe it's on the planostr.com website, can the public view the Deckard data?
The public cannot view the Deckard data at this time. What we have is, we have, the Deckard data is currently available to City, but we have provided the information that we've provided the task force is available. So that is available. All the presentations that have been done are posted. So things like the graphic, I brought the slides that we showed at the open house. This is still available online on the website. If we can use the overhead camera, you can see an example of sort of some infographics we put together using the Deckard data. So that's an example of information that people can see. I can show you. One more. Maybe, maybe it didn't print out, but we have also a map that's sort of a, a heat map that shows density of short-term rentals by census tract. So things like that will, will be available online.
Okay. Are they able to look up where individual short-term rentals are?
I, I think that that was shown, if memory serves, that information was presented to the task force, so that information would be available in the last, in the presentation at the last task force meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We do have a speaker. Thanks Christina.
Certainly.
Cindy Patillo. Good evening. My name is Cindy Patillo, and I represent the Plano chapter of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition. The short-term rental update on the agenda this evening is a reminder of the significant effort being undertaken to get this issue right for the City of Plano. Our coalition is extremely grateful to Christina Day and the entire Planning Department, Neighborhood Services, the City's Legal Department, this council, the Short-Term Rental Task Force, and so many others. Despite all of the good work being done, I'm here to address the absence of regulations and registration requirements for short-term rentals in Plano. As you know, in May, the council passed an interim ban and proposed a registration ordinance to accompany that ban. At the next city council meeting, that proposed ordinance was tabled. In June, the, the city proposed a new ordinance with significant changes that our coalition believed had essentially gutted the first one. Thankfully, that version was tabled as well. This action was repeated in August, which brings me to why I'm here tonight. While our coalition wants any proposed ordinance to successfully and fully address the issue of STRs in Plano, right now we have a different concern. Today, after almost four months, a third of the temporary ban's lifetime, we have a ban on paper only, but absolutely no ability to enforce it. We need operating regulations and registration requirements to accompany and create enforceability of the ban now. Without them, the ban on new short-term rentals is nothing more than a goal with no pathway to reach it. As always, we want Plano to continue to be a city of excellence. Regulating and registering existing short-term rentals helps meet that objective, so please, let's focus on that sooner rather than later. Thank you.
The Consent and Regular Agendas, item five. Any item a council member would like to remove?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to remove item F from the Consent Agenda for individual consideration.
Say.
F as in Frank?
F.
F as in Frank.
All right.
And I'd like to remove E as in Echo, but I don't think there's much that rhymes with E that requires distinction.
That was close enough. Any, any other item?
We actually had item J removed by a citizen.
We have, we have E, F, and J to, to being removed. Any items for discussion or future agendas? All right? Thank you. I now declare that Plano City Council is reconvened in an open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Reverend Michael Forge, pastor of the Prince of Peace Catholic Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge, led by Girl Scout Troop 4578. Please rise.
Lord God, in Thanksgiving, we gather this evening as community leaders entrusted to serve our citizens, your people. Help us to do so in love, knowledge, and wisdom. Continue to bless us with your grace and direct us in all your ways. And for this, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Armed with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Be seated. We have several presentations tonight, and our first presentation is by Congressman Keith Self, celebrating Plano's 150th birthday. If I could have Congressman Self come down to the podium?
Right here, Mayor.
Oh! I've always wanted to play for you right there.
Oh, well.
I'll hand this over to you. Thank you so much for being here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
150 years. When I was the county judge, there, there was nothing more pleasurable than giving people recognition for their farms or their cities for 100 years and 150 years. So it's Plano's turn. 150 years. Now, that's a big number, and we all say 150 years. Let's think of it in these terms. 1873. And Plano was here because of a railroad at the time, right? Houston and Central Texas, Houston and Central Texas Railroad. So that's how you got started. Well, Mayor, I just want to tell you, your family has had a lot to do with this over the last five decades. So you've been a major part of it. You and your dad and your family have been a major part of it. But we have a letter, but we also have a certificate of recognition of Plano in celebration of the 150th anniversary of the City of Plano, 1873. And look to what you've grown to. One of the largest cities in North Texas. You've held the standard for excellence for years in North Texas. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you Congressman. Thank you so much. Well, for those of you that have been in Plano for the last, gosh, we're getting close to 10 years. We, we are so proud to be a part of the Hunger Action Month. And a lot of times, we just call it Peanut Butter Month. But this is, this is such an important program for us in Plano and throughout North Texas now. It's, it's become so large, but we, we appreciate Plano being the major part of it for many, many years. So I have a proclamation to read regarding Hunger Action Month, September 2023. So whereas Hunger Action Month was established in 2008, it, it has been more than 10 years. By feeding America and works to promote ways for individuals, organizations, communities everywhere to get involved in helping fight the hunger crisis. Whereas in an effort to raise awareness and curb this trend, we launched community initiatives in 2013 and have received an outpouring of love from our citizens. Last school year, the North Texas Food Bank distributed nearly 35,000 backpacks filled with nutritious, kid-friendly snacks, and nearly 8,000 meal boxes to Plano ISD elementary students, which is equal to 256,000 nutritious meals. And whereas the Plano City Council will not relent in its efforts to care for our own, and we challenge all Collin County to get involved. And so during this month of September, we'll come together to help solve the hunger crisis in North Texas by partnering with all of North Texas to promote and participate in the annual Peanut Butter Drive. There will be both virtual and in-person options for participating. The more we collect, the more we make. So therefore, I, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, do hereby proclaim September of 2023 is Hunger Action Month in Plano, and I do thereby encourage all citizens to join me, the Plano City Council, and the North Texas Food Bank in working together to eradicate hunger in our city, county, state, and nation. Thank you. So I will briefly tell you to please go on North Texas Food Bank on September 1st. It's the beginning of the Peanut Butter Drive, and we are challenged to offer 200,000 pounds of peanut butter and hopefully $200,000, because the money and the contribution of peanut butter goes to fighting hunger in not only our city and county, but, but in North Texas. So thank you so much, and we'll continue to put it on social media as much as possible. Okay. Our next presentation is, is pretty amazing, and that's why you see a lot of first responders over here. So Plano Police, Plano Fire Rescue, and Medical Center of Plano staff members are being recognized for their rescue efforts. If you don't mind playing the video?
Hi, my name is Rick Armijo. I've been in Plano for almost 25 years now, wonderful family of seven. I've been playing club soccer since I was, you know, 10 years old. I still play on Sundays, you know, I play golf regularly, I run, I lift weights, so this was a bit of a surprise.
My mom comes and wakes me up, and he was collapsed in the bathroom, and I called 911. They told me to begin CPR. A certain point in the thing, like, he wasn't responding, and it looked like he was already dead, which was a pretty freaky thing to, to see.
Trent called 911. It felt like two seconds, and the operator says, "Open the front door."
We sent first responders. Police arrived first because they were really close, and we had an officer start chest compressions. Fire arrived right after that and continued good chest compressions. After good chest compressions, we hook up a monitor, we analyze it, and we found a rhythm we could shock. After a second defibrillation, we recognized that he was an ECMO candidate. It buys us time to fix a patient who's in cardiac arrest in a way we in a way we've never had that time before.
ECMO is the highest form of life support, and it bypasses the heart and the lungs, and it studs the work of the heart and the lungs. Several teams in the hospital get activated at the same time. We meet Plano Fire and Rescue in the ED. We transport the patient to the cath lab, and we put them on ECMO. Rick spent 13 days with us. We put him on BA ECMO on day of arrival of a cardiac arrest, and 13 days later, he was able to walk out with his wife and his family and return to his life as normal.
I think the important thing for our community to know is that quietly behind the scenes, your firefighters and police officers, ER nurses and ER doctors are practicing every day for things like this.
You know, this will forever be engraved with me and as a memory of the number of people that took care of me. I'm thankful, forever grateful for what they did.
So it's my pleasure to call forward Officer Allison Renfro, Plano Police, Chris Biggerstaff, Plano Fire Chief, Dr. Mark Gamber, Rick Armio, Tiffany Dakin and Trent Dakin, Rohana Collins, 911 operator, Reagan Bradshaw, 911 operator, Plano Fire Rescue Staff Brandon Stacks, Sean Ritchie, Chris Wheelock, Michael Tartaro, Ben Roth, Daniel Ayers, David Armstrong, Ryan Turner, and the Medical City of Plano Staff Ashley Smith, VP of Cardiology, Dr. Crescent's Policia, pulmonologist, and Debbie Miller, ECMO Program Manager. Let's give them all a hand.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize some outstanding patient care. All the people you see up here today had a part in this care, and you don't, that doesn't happen by accident. You have a lot of preparation that goes into it, a lot of support from our city leadership that goes into care like that. And a lot of leadership by our medical director, Dr. Gamber. And we have, we have the best medical director. And I'm going to turn the mic over to him, and then when he gets done, I'd like to present something to the Armios.
First, I want to thank the Armios for having the courage to be up here. When you guys walked into our education session a few weeks ago and met our firefighters that day when we were all in there, it just meant the world to us, and we appreciate the chance to get to celebrate you. For everybody in here that's a citizen of Plano, this is, to save a life is really a team effort. And it started with you calling 911 and recognizing. It started with your son in Plano ISD, where he learned to do CPR. So it's a celebration of the school system. We're right above dispatch right now, where our call takers talked to you and worked through it with you and found the closest police officer and firefighters to come respond. And in the background, we're training every day for things like this so that we can have celebrations where we're together and celebrate life. We've got an incredible team at the hospital that we hand off care. Plano's always been an incredibly advanced city for medical care, and an ECMO program just takes that even to the next level. So we'd been practicing for this next level care for months, and we're happy that it came together where this practice came to fruition with a young man with a lot of life left to live, and we're here to celebrate you. So thanks. So Chief?
One of the things the chief started before me was when we had a cardiac arrest survivor, we would give them a Plano Fire Rescue baseball cap, and then we'd give you a challenge coin also.
Thank you so much. Take a picture. Let's get all, everybody in here. That shouldn't be hard. Comments of public interest?
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with 30 total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. I do have a few speakers this evening. The first one is Rizwan Khan.
Hi, guys.
Rizwan, I think you're just here because you like to talk.
No, 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 no. I have a pertinent issue. Sorry.
I'm just teasing with you. Good to see you.
Little flummox, my, I had to FaceTime my dad to put on the tie, so it's a little rusty. But anyway, just a quick introduction. My name is Riz Khan. I'm the founder and executive director of a global nonprofit organization called Politics for Teams. But I'm, that's not what I'm here to talk about, and Mayor Muns doesn't agree with me on that. But I'm here to talk about an interest of mine that's been really hurting us. I have some Plano West soccer members up there, and we're here just representing our team because we've been practicing on the public fields for a long time now, Carpenter Park. And last Saturday, we had a little bit of a run-in where we seemed to be not supposed to be on the field, so we were, as we were told, to leave the fields. And that's the issue I want to talk about, is I've had so many incredible memories on that field, Carpenter Park, playing. I actually met the guy on the left, Samuel Matt's there, playing there. And I met a lot of the other kids from playing on those fields. And for me personally, I think there should be a way for us as students to access those fields in a way that is not, you know, the current system is $15 for 90 minutes. And I think there should be some sort of system that the council or the Parks and Recreation Department should implement where we can have those facilities for free. And the reality is, there's 2,677 high school student athletes in PISD, and we want to represent the city of excellence in a way through athletics, academics. But talking about athletics, that's on those fields. So we believe there should be some sort of system where we, as students, can access those fields and play to the best of our ability. And there, we know the current system, there's an online forum, or there's some sort of online reservation system. And the problem with that is, we also have to compete, compete with coaches and select level clubs. And we're just students wanting to play. You know, I've grown up, born and raised here in the city of Plano, and I think there should be a way for us to truly access those fields that we've grown up on and continue to emulate the excellent status that we have here at the city. So I just wanted to talk, you know, just, there's any way that the council or the Parks and Rec Department could help us out, that we can access these fields in some sort of free manner, online system where maybe we scan our student ID just to ensure that we're students. But we just want to make sure that we have access, because we have Plano West Soccer, we have a thing called Project P. We're trying to make the playoffs the first time in a while. I don't know who the captain is, but he must be a pretty good-looking guy. I don't know who he is. But, so we want to be able to make the playoffs and fulfill our goals, maybe going to state champions. We want to make the city of Plano proud. So we want to have an opportunity to use fields that we've grown up, grow up, grown up on, as I said, and also have an ability to make the city of Plano showcased on our athletic front as well. But that's my time's up right now. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Riz. We'll give you some guidance on that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cassandra Bowle.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I come tonight, Cassandra Bowle, 4120 Sonora Drive. I come tonight with a note of commendation for the two newest developments in East Plano, Assembly Park and the Avenue K Lofts. I've got the pictures of them here. This is Assembly Park. It's coming together pretty well. I just wanted to let you know that those have really come out to be very creative, very aesthetically pleasing. I'm so pleased to see the townhomes that are available in Assembly Park. It's going to give some folks an opportunity to buy and then build some equity as well. And the Avenue K Lofts, looking really good. It was hard to tell when it was first built, how it was going to turn out, but it is looking very nice, very aesthetically pleasing. There's parking underneath the lofts, and also on the corner of Avenue K and Park Boulevard, the Rent a Wheels business has closed, and I believe, I look forward to, I definitely look forward to seeing the community art display. That's going to accentuate the new look of the corner. So thank you very much for this really lovely development in East Plano, both of them.
Thank you.
Doug Reeves.
Plano City Council members, earlier this year, two of our stellar City Council members made interesting public statements. The statements were in regard to the property at Los Rios and Jupiter Road. Councilman Anthony Riccadelli stated, "Residents' feedback on developments like this matter, and it can only matter if those zoning decisions remain in Plano to be made by this city council." I just hope everyone understands that and the importance of making local control, of maintaining local control over zoning decisions. And Councilman Shelby Williams stated, "The property at that location is positioned in such a way that the city could face a protracted legal battle if it were denied." Now, they can correct me, but if I'm misrepresenting this, but in effect, they were saying the city does not have control of zoning, and the city has been threatened with a lawsuit if it doesn't rezone land and approve apartments to be constructed on that property. In 2015, before any of you took office, the Plano City Council adopted a new comprehensive plan known as the Plano Tomorrow Plan. A local group called Plano Future did not like the pernicious consequences that were sure to result from the Plano Tomorrow Plan, that is, the high density strewn through, throughout the city, basically urbanizing suburban Plano. Ultimately, the conflict between the city and Plano Future led to Plano Future filing a lawsuit. Plano Future petitioned the city to allow the transformative Plano Tomorrow Plan to be voted on by the citizens of Plano. Even though the final ruling by the court sided with the citizens and ordered the city to abide by the petition, the city decided not to allow the citizens to vote on the Plano Tomorrow Plan. The city leadership of 2015 did not explain to the citizens why they did what they did. The citizens were kept in the dark regarding the fact that, just as Mr. Riccadelli and Mr. Williams stated, the city no longer had control of zoning, and in fact, would have been sued by an outside organization if they kept in place the Plano Tomorrow Plan back in 2015 and refused to rezone land and approve apartments to be constructed on that land. You have an opportunity to right a wrong done, I feel, done by the city. I'm asking you to inform citizens, the citizens, as to what is going on. Meet with each, meet among yourselves, come up with a plan to take the citizens of Plano, take the citizens of Plano that have been kept in the dark into the light. Inform them about the affirmatively furthering fair housing rule that was enacted in 2015.
Mr. Reeves?
That people are in the dark about. Most citizens do not know that cities and towns that...
Your time's up. If you'll just wrap it up.
Time's up.
Go ahead, just wrap it up if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, let me just cut to the end here. Let's see. I'm basically asking you to be transparent from this point on, on this issue. Let the citizens in on what's going on. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would like to take a moment to say happy birthday to my wife, Maria. She is at home taking care of our children to enable me to be here and serve the city of Plano with Councilman Smith on his birthday.
Thank you. Consent agenda, please.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Motion to approve except for items E, F, and J.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of E, F, and J. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Item E.
Item E, to approve a request for variance for the replacement of existing structures that are approaching their end of useful life at the North Texas Municipal Water District Rowlett Creek Regional Water Treatment, Wastewater Treatment Plant at 1600 Los Rios Boulevard within the current Federal Emergency Management Agency 100-year floodplain of Rowlett Creek in the city of Plano. Our speaker on this item is Cassandra Bowle.
Thank you again for a couple minutes of your time. Cassandra Bowle, 4120 Sonora Drive. I've asked for the consideration of this variance request for the Rowlett Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant to be taken outside of the consent agenda. I'm seeking some more information about the equipment that's reaching its end of life as a residence of, resident of of East Plano, I would respectfully ask that any city considerations of the Rowlett Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant be considered on separate agenda items. This aging facility directly impacts residents and businesses two to three miles from the plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to speak for, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Mark and Caleb, I appreciate your email exchanges today, providing me more information on this. I still have some additional questions. I wasn't entirely clear. Are the proposed structures and the UV being erected where there are no structures today? As I understand it, if I'm inferring correctly, one facility is being outfitted differently, so the structure isn't going to change, and another is going to be demolished and another structure built in its place. Is that accurate?
I believe that's accurate. I believe there's a couple of members from the district that'd like to provide you a little more detail of what's actually going to occur.
Thank you.
Meeting Council, Mark Simon, Assistant Deputy for Engineering at North Texas. So in regards to your question, Councilman Williams, actually, both structures will be taken to the ground and then rebuilt in the, actually in a smaller footprint than what the actual current structures are.
Okay, on, on top of the footprint of the existing structures?
Yes.
Okay, so nothing else is going to be built outside of that? They're, are they both going to be for UV disinfecting?
No, one of them, one of them's for UV disinfection and one of them is for additional filter capacity.
Okay, okay, so nothing...
So within the floodplain. There are other items on the site that are...
So as I understand it, the only reason for the variance is because it is within a floodplain. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so even the existing structures today are in the floodplain, but they were constructed, I guess, either prior to review or before there was a requirement. I'm not really sure of the history of that. And so we're just trying to correct that matter and then advance the facilities for the current treatment process.
So is it fair to characterize it as basically retrofitting the plant for UV disinfection and upgraded filters?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, one more question, just for the benefit of the audience and citizens that are watching in here who are not privy to the exchange of emails. What are we talking about here with regards to this upgrade? You're talking about additional basins. Is that correct for the filtration system?
Two basins on the structure, on the plant right now, in the same location we're going to build. Think of them as like a large swimming pool. They're around 9,000 square feet, okay, in terms of their dimensions. And they've got a bunch of walls inside. And so the water comes in and it has to kind of navigate its way through the channels, and that provides the mixing required for the current disinfection process. So what we'll do instead is demolish that structure and we'll build a structure that's a smaller swimming pool, but has lanes. Think of it as, but fixed wall lanes. And then the UV is like powerful light bulbs, really, right? So the flow will pass through the UV bulbs and they provide instantaneous disinfection and they don't require all the mixing time. So by TCQ regulation, that mixing has to take place for a minimum of 30 seconds. But with the UV treatment technology, it's instantaneous, so we can reduce the footprint of the actual structure itself.
Okay, during this renovation period, do we take contingency plans in case we have additional overflow during storm events, et cetera? Are you, is this going to impact your capacity to treat?
Yeah, so we have two structures right now, so we can sequence it. And then we also have additional UV treatment capacity in the, in the new train that was built in phase one of this, of these improvements. So we'll have available disinfection capacity in two ways until we complete the renovation.
Okay, and third, last question. With these improvements, we're going to be basically improving our treatment capabilities with wastewater coming for that wastewater treatment plan?
Yeah, so the average day treatment stays the same. This is primarily to deal with flows that increase during wet weather events. The, the major benefit for both our staff as well as the neighborhood is that by going to UV technology, we eliminate the use of chlorine gas or chlorine, liquid chlorine for disinfection, and we just move towards the high-intensity UV bulbs instead.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
One quick question. I think it's important to, to get answered on the record for everyone. The improvements that you're making are going to be done on the existing property and none of this will require extending outside the boundary of the existing structure, correct?
Yes, it's all within the existing footprint of the current...
Okay, great, thanks.
...process.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I hear a motion?
Motion, yeah, after you, after you, Shelby.
Motion to approve item E.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda, item E. Please vote. Okay, motion passes eight to zero. Item F.
Item F, approval of an expenditure in the amount of $1,585,000 for the purchase of real property located at 3321 East Parker Road from Santander and Sofi, Sofi Balwija, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Matthew Jaeger. I am the city's real estate manager and here to answer any questions you may have on the side.
We, we have a speaker that...
Hold this item.
Cassandra Bowle.
Just looking out for the citizens of Plano.
You win the award for tonight.
I think so. Cassandra Bowle, 4120 Sonora Drive. Just looked over the consent agenda and the $1.5 million purchase was, that really caught my eyes. Like, that's a little bit of, that's a little bit too much money to be spending, the taxpayers, the residents of Plano, on the consent agenda item. I really feel very strongly that the city of Plano residents and taxpayers should receive full transparency. Then I looked at the address and I realized that this is the intersection, it's a T-intersection at San Gabriel and Parker Road. I travel that route every single day. Just curious, as to the city's interest and request that this purchase would get full airing, perhaps at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Riccadelli.
Thank you, Mayor. I did, you know, have a question about this. I reached out to the city manager about this item earlier and received a response that the appraised value on this land is, is 1.37 million. The proposed purchase price is 1.585 million, I believe. I understand that there is an issue where, you know, I guess we would be using it just for parkland, you know, for land only, and there's a structure on there currently, and the 1.37 million dollar appraisal is, is for land only. Could you speak to how the, the fact that there's a structure on the land currently interacts with the applicability of that appraisal for land only?
Sure. So that appraisal is best on the highest and best use of the property as determined by that appraiser. Where this property, this property is on the market, it was listed in late May for 1.8 million dollars. The city pretty much found, discovered, made an offer, and began dialogue with the property owners in mid-July. That appraisal is based on the idea that this parcel would not be best used as its current use as an estate residence. It's one home of approximately, I believe, 2,800, 3,000 square feet on three acres of property that adjoins Oak Point Park and Nature Preserve. Instead, the better use would be for it to be developed as residential lots in the future. So that 1.37 million dollars is valued on the proposal that it would best be used for future residential development.
Okay, and so just as a follow-up to that, if that's the highest and best used then, so basically that the appraisal was the, the highest dollar value used, the appraiser felt would go for 1.37 million?
Correct.
Then do we feel like there might be any, any room to negotiate down further from this price? Or, you know, are there any other bidders that we're bidding against? Do we know?
I'm not aware of any other bidders that said. I haven't reached out or kind of inquired on that. Negotiations have taken place. To my view, they've reached their logical conclusion, and this presents the best compromise with a willing buyer and willing seller of the land. I haven't introduced the idea of eminent domain, which we would probably need to obtain this parcel at what the appraised value is.
Okay, and, and so you said haven't introduced, so does that mean have, have we offered the appraised value and they rejected that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, thank, thank you for that information. Thank you for those answers.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second to approve. Okay.
Since we're proposing to put the facility elsewhere and basically shift this to usable parkland, are we under a requirement to replace the usable parkland since we're putting a facility somewhere else? Should we just do without the land entirely?
Councilmember Williams, I don't know the answer to that question in terms of a state mandate or something under our zoning code.
Okay.
Can you, can you restate your question real quick, Councilman?
Is there a require, I know what we intend to do with this land, to turn it into usable parkland. Is there anything compelling us to purchase it at all? Could we effectively and legally do without purchasing it?
I believe that this, this land was part of our Parks Master Plan as something that we sought to acquire as part of our Parks, Parks Master Plan, but I don't believe that we are legally bound to purchase the land. Because our Parks Master Plan, as you know, does change over time, so we're not bound by that plan to, to purchase that. But it is part of our, I'm seeing Ron right there, it is part of our Parks Master Plan to, to acquire this.
Yes, Ron Smith, Department of Parks and Recreation Director. This is on our adopted master plan from 2018 and also the one that was most recently adopted by this council to be incorporated into Oak Point Park and Nature Preserve.
I have a motion, a second, to, to approve.
I, I was just going to say something real quick, Mayor, just because I never want to surprise anybody. I'm going to vote against this item, not because I don't want to acquire the parkland, but because, you know, I'd, I'd like to see us get to that appraised number, or at least continue negotiations a little bit longer, especially since we're not aware of any competing bidders at the moment. So I, I would consider it in the future, but...
All right, so I have a motion, a second, to approve item F. Please vote. Motion passes five, two, with one abstention. Item J.
Item J, to approve revisions to the city of Plano policy statement for Economic Development Incentives Program and providing an effective date. Jennifer Groisman.
Jennifer Groisman, Plano. I took this item off the consent agenda for two reasons: the true meaning of economic development and the power you're giving away. First, what is economic development really? Some people say it is corporate welfare. Others call it crony capitalism. It is neither. Economic development is fascism. Yes, Mussolini had an economic policy. Economic fascism is government control of economic activity, investment, and planning. The government and companies go into public-private partnerships, and the government can restrict any action with stifling regulations or promote any action by giving money or incentives to companies. This interferes with the economy and has consequences. One is reduced tax revenue. That cities could spend on staff raises and giving residents a lower tax rate in a year when we are suffering under inflation. Economic fascism also picks winners and losers, favoring large companies while neglecting small businesses that employ the majority. It also distorts natural market forces with companies choosing locations based on government incentives, not sound business principles, such as what is best for their customers and employees. This also pits cities against each other, making neighbors into competitors. Economic fascism is wrong, and it gives too much power to central planners and unelected bureaucrats. That brings me to my second reason for pulling this item. This policy gives way too much unchecked authority to the city manager. This has nothing to do with Mr. Israelson as a city manager. This has to do with council giving away its power to an unelected person. Under Section 12, the city manager or designate will have the power to change an agreement. Economic development incentive offers can increase or decrease the initial offer. In other words, an unchecked, unelected person does not need this body's approval to change an agreement it voted on. Lastly, and most outrageously, you are giving power to an unelected person to approve an economic development agreement with a value of 100,000 taxpayer dollars or less without the approval of this elected body and a public hearing. While we have a wonderful city manager, city council has the power of the purse. You and only you are to determine what happens with our money. This is because only you can be hired or fired by the voters. We don't get to hire the city manager or any city staff. We gave you the power of the purse. You can't just give that power away, and you shouldn't want to. Therefore, I urge you to reject this economic development policy. I will leave you with this parting question. Do you want an economy aligned with Adam Smith, Milton Friedman, and Thomas Sowell, and our founders and framers, or Mussolini's ideals? Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, I, I was just going to speak briefly, if I could, Mayor, to address those comments. So, well, and actually, a couple of clarifications also for city manager Israelson. We, we've certainly discussed this policy, so I just wanted to put some things out there, you know, for the public to be aware of. First of all, the city manager authority, if I'm recalling correctly off the top of my head, is only to change an offer that's been approved by the council or change certain other things that have been approved by the council by up to 10% or $200,000, whichever is less. And that $200,000 cap was, was actually my idea, and, and the staff and the rest of the council were very open to it. And so we, we've really done a lot to preserve the, the city council's role in this. You know, basically, there, there can be changes within a certain band, but city council approval is still acquired, required for most steps under this. And I believe also that regarding the, the smaller agreements that can be approved under the city manager's authority, those have to be net revenue positive, right, for the city?
That's correct.
And so that, that was another thing that we, that we discussed that was important to me. Net rev, for those who, who aren't seeing these frequently, net revenue positive means that the tax revenue generated as a result of the, of the economic development is greater than the cost to the city of bringing that company here and creating that tax revenue, and therefore, the city comes out ahead, there's additional tax revenue, and the rest of us, as homeowners or otherwise taxpayers in the city of Plano, have a lower tax burden as a result of that. Now, I will say philosophically, I don't love that we're in this business at all. I frankly wish the legislature would do away with cities being able to compete with each other in this way, because I believe that when cities compete, taxpayers lose. You know, it's, it's a race to the bottom, like Ms. Groisman was alluding to, because then it becomes, you know, it becomes a part of our economic development efforts where we have to compete with other cities about how much money cities are going to give away. That being said, that would have to be a solution that the Texas legislature would do. If we unilaterally stop doing this as the city, I'm sure, if we unilaterally stop doing this as the city of Plano, we will lose corporations, we will lose tax base, and so it's a necessary evil. We, we have to do this, otherwise. There, there are companies that will either not come to Plano or will leave Plano for other cities, and I don't love that, but it's, it's a fact of life, and so we have to play by the rules as they exist. So I will move that we approve this item.
Second.
Okay, did you do that? Sorry, Maria. Second to who?
Anthony.
Oh, I'm sorry, Anthony.
New motion.
You got to that motion.
You got to that one, Trump.
I have a motion, a second to approve a consent consent agenda, item J, right? All right?
Mm-hmm.
Please vote. Hmm. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
All right. Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. Presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, the length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing on the fiscal year 2023-24 recommended budget, proposed community investment program, and the proposed ad valorem tax rate.
Yes, this evening, we are having our third public hearing regarding the operating budget, which totals $729 million. The community investment program totals $340 million. Both these budgets are set to be adopted on Monday night, September 11, at 7:00. In addition, we are going to start our proposed public hearing on the proposed ad valorem tax rate, which, within the recommended budget, is currently 41.76 cents. We are going to have a discussion regarding the tax rate right after this, but this is the portion of the public hearing. In addition, September 11, Monday, 7:00 PM, the city council is scheduled to adopt the tax rate.
Thanks, Karen. Any questions for Karen? I'll open the public hearing. Do you have any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a a chart that I created today, which is a visual representation of the analysis I was talking about at the last meeting.
Okay. Yeah. But it's beautiful artwork. Put it on the front.
Item number two, discussion and direction regarding the proposed ad valorem tax rate.
Hold on, do I need to open it? Oh, that's right. Okay.
Okay. Do we, Lisa, do we have another copy we could put in the overhead? Okay, thank you. I also, Mark, I do have questions about this, since you put it back on my radar. I'll I'll discuss this first. So, staff was good enough to provide us with 20 years of data on the increase of the budget net of the North Texas Municipal Water District, because that's calculated separately from our our budget based on tax revenues, as well as average home prices, average homesteaded prices, tax bills associated with both, CPI, inflation, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, MCI, which is the municipal cost index, version of inflation, plus population growth. So I took just five of these measures to show the progression from the 2003-2004 fiscal year for Plano, and show how each tracked over the years. So one of the things that I was saying at the last meeting was that we've gone through periods of significant divergence between the amount of the budget and MCI, municipal cost index, plus population growth. So I feel that what we should ultimately be tracking to, weighing a few other things, is keeping up with the inflation that we experience. Municipal cost index measures things such as the cost of asphalt, which doesn't, you don't get at Kroger. So that's literally the cost for cities, municipal cost index. We need to be keeping pace with the inflation that impacts the services that we offer as a city, plus population growth. Now, this, the size of the budget is disconnected for this purpose from the value of homesteaded properties, or the tax rate as it applies to properties taxed in both years, for purposes of the no new revenue rate calculation and the voter approval rate. But what we see here, starting first with the green line and the the red line, we have periods of convergence. That's where, basically, they have caught up to one another, our, the growth of our budget and the MCI, our inflation plus population growth, to where they're in basically equilibrium. If we adopt the philosophy that we should maintain excellent quality services while employing fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, then we should be seeking to keep pace with inflation and the growth of our population, because we have to provide services to that growing population, but not in excess of that. That's the fiduciary responsibility part. So in 2006, '07 to 2007, '08, those lines are pretty much even. There was a little bit of divergence there, but then the Great Recession happened, and the budget actually shrank, while MCI and population growth went up. Then after a while, the budget climbed to catch up to it, and then they converged again in about 2019, '20. That's when, that's when we adopted no new revenue rate for the first time. For the next fiscal year, the world had turned upside down, and we deliberately adopted the no new revenue rate because of the uncertainty and the impact to our people. Then we did that for two more fiscal years. So I had never, I never had never intended to champion the no new revenue rate for a fifth year in a row this year, and the reason is because of the the separation of that green and red line toward the far right edge of this chart, because we were holding back in during a period of economic uncertainty, and based on our last budget discussion, we'd been losing competitiveness with other area cities. And let's face it, back in 2004, 2005, 2006, we didn't face the same level of competition from other metroplex cities. We do, and we have to remain competitive going forward, in terms of the caliber of our people, the quality of our services. So I do champion adopting the the modified voter approval rate if, as we discussed last meeting, we can ensure that the delta there is put toward compensation for our staff, based on the outcome of the compensation philosophy study that's underway. I don't know what that's going to entail, what quote-unquote "right sizing" or "compensation" is going to entail. I want to make sure that we can do it, because, as I've said multiple times, in the period of inflation that we've had over the past couple of years, even though we've given staff a 3% compensation increase each year with 8%, 9% inflation, that's an actual pay cut. So I want to balance making our staff whole while recognizing that our citizens, our taxpayers, have not had the luxury of those increases either. It's a, it's a, it's a delicate balance, but I do have, I do have some questions pursuant to that, that I want to ask about the options in front of us.
Please go ahead.
So, in these options that we're presented with, first, I want to clarify something. One of the footnotes here about the the maintain existing longevity pay, I'm assuming that option means we dispense with the longevity pay increase and recoup the $1.3 million for, to achieve our council goals.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the footnote in here says consultants would consider longevity as a part of the compensation philosophy study. Should I interpret that to mean that they'll consider it, and if they recommend it, then we would add it back from the compensation fund?
Correct.
Okay. What is the current anticipated completion date of the compensation philosophy study?
We have just engaged the consultant recently, so we anticipate at least three months before that to come back. So it'd probably be close to the end of the calendar year.
Okay. But I think it would be safe to say, I should say, would it would be safe to say that whatever the consultant recommends as part of the compensation philosophy, whether that's longevity pay or other creative mechanisms, that we would then be able to use the the compensation fund to apply their recommendations?
I don't want to promise that we will have the full fund to fund everything that they say.
To the extent that we have the fund.
To the extent that we have the fund, we will, we will begin taking steps this current fiscal year to address any shortcomings they see in our compensation philosophy.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I was uncertain about the math here. So when we talked about the recommended rate of 41.76, or the rate of 41.76 for the recommended budget, we said that in order to achieve the 40.60 rate, we would need to remove 6.4 million from the budget. So if we're going to take that delta of 6.4 million, we're going to put an alternative $5 million in into the compensation pool. Is that on top of the $2 million that we already have?
No, the $5 million includes the $2 million. So the difference between the 6.4 and the 5 is the 1.5% increase. So that's going to 4.5%.
Okay.
So that, between 5 and 1.5, is is going to be that that 6.4. So
Okay.
That's, that's the difference.
And that 1.5%, that is the 3.3 million, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Then I'm square on that. Then, in addition to, in addition to everything I laid out with this chart, I think that if we adopt this rate, the 41.76 rate, we will, and apply that to right sizing our compensation, I think we will have pretty much achieved equilibrium again after our zigging and zagging through the past couple of decades. I think it would be incumbent upon council this budget year to adopt a budget and tax rate philosophy to guide us and future councils that that takes a multi-year view, because where we've diverged here, because of significant economic and global events. And I think we need to take a look both backwards and forwards. Originally, I was thinking maybe we just view this in terms of five years, but I'm thinking maybe as a philosophical approach, it would be more, it would be more appropriate to take a three-year look back and a three-year look forward. Of course, nobody has a crystal ball, but whatever environment we're in, whether it's the Great Recession, whether it's COVID, whether it's an SNL crisis, whatever life is going to throw at us, and it will, we can take a three-year look forward to say, okay, we've exercised restraint, or we've made up for the past three years, or the three years prior. How are we going to approach the budget and the tax rate for the next three years, assuming that the planet doesn't get any worse? These are rough guidelines, but I've made some notes as to the kinds of philosophies that I think should guide us. One is just taking a multi-year view. No year exists in isolation. When we started looking at adopting the voter approval rate, or at least the 3.5% increase, this year, we did it through the lens of what have we done the past few years, in what I would say is probably the the greatest era of fiscal responsibility since I've lived in Plano. But we have to set three, maybe more, pillars that we're working around, and I think they would align very closely to your five areas of inspection, Mark. Exercising fiduciary responsibilities to taxpayers, which includes making sure that their impacts under CPI are addressed. Maintaining high-quality city services and remaining competitive. It's hard to strike that balance, but I think that should be an explicit philosophy to guide us going forward. And secondly, I'd like a statement, like right at the top, acknowledging that the city doesn't have any money. It's all the taxpayers' money, and just recognize that responsibility every time we undergo this process. And these were just some ideas that I jotted down, but I think it's worth actually codifying a philosophy this year.
So, councilman, I would just add in, we began the fiscal roadmap this year. And so I think that that a philosophy makes sense, and it's great for the city. I would suggest that we might want to do a little bit additional work to make sure we have clarity on what what each of those terms means. I have no issue with with bringing that back as a work session item to be able to be discussed.
Not proposing to do that tonight.
Yeah. Thank you. But I think for us tonight, one of the things I was, and you kind of touched on it, so I'll explain just the differences real quick. You know, I mean this with sincerity. I mentioned this last time, there's no hidden pools, there's, there's no magic funds. This is going to be something that there, we're a matter of choices for council. And, but all of these are great, and we appreciate the council's support. So I want to make sure we we say that first. So the council goals option, this goes back to, there was, there was two comments that I took away from head nods from council. One was that it did require a compensation pool for anything above that that voter-approved rate. The second one was restoring completely the capital maintenance, so the infrastructure side of things. I did provide a little bit of an alternate option, just a slight difference. And part of that is the delaying, basically, half a million dollars, just a little bit more than that, in capital maintenance facility projects that we have identified. And then the the difference from that would be adding back in positions. And the reason for that, counsel, is the backlog of work that we are experiencing. That backlog continues to build, and without the positions, that's going to be even more substantial next year. So I did provide an alternate option while trying to keep as close as I possibly could to to those two items. I do feel that the the additional positions, and we have scrubbed those eight weeks from, you know, you name it. I told my staff, I went past the weeds, and I was in the soil in this budget. And I was looking every possible, I wasn't looking for nickels, I was looking for pennies, used pennies, you know, whatever it was, even found some of those Canadian pennies. But we, we were looking for anything that would possibly work to make this, make this work. And I do truly feel that the, the positions that we have listed, and we have them listed out there, you know, librarians and associate planners and production coordinators and attorneys and TS project managers, those positions help alleviate a backlog of work. And so that was the option, alternate option two. I will be candid with you. I will take either option. I think that this is a great budget, and appreciate all the work that you did, but did want to at least offer that as an alternative.
Thank you.
I appreciate the work that went into this. I understand how difficult it was. Two of the items on here, reducing new hires and maintaining existing longevity pay. Because my whole stake in the ground was providing for the compensation fund, I'm a little concerned about putting either of these on the chopping block, but I realize the money has to come from somewhere. When we were talking the weekend before last, you were asking for clarification as to whether I counted that delta in addition to the $2 million we already had set aside or not. If I were to change my answer and say that you can, you can include that $2 million that we already have put away for the compensation study, figuring it's going to be used one way or the other in the end, but we can move forward immediately with the new hires and the longevity pay, would that restore that equilibrium?
Karen?
Well, I just want to say something. I think I might have missed something. This $5 million at the bottom has the $2 million that was originally in there, plus an additional $3 million. The additional $3 million came from up here, and we have already funded, or we're in the process of going up to the 4.5%. I just want to make that clear.
Because the 1.5 is 3.3 in that calculation. So I think he's got that that math. So the bottom line is, I don't think that it makes whole. So we could move from the bottom line up to fund that, but it decreases the pool, if that makes sense.
And that's what I'm saying I'd be okay with. We're basically front-loading that toward compensation now in exchange for a lesser pool on the back end.
So essentially, the pool would be about $2 million, or, excuse me, $3 million, and $2 million would go up into to the longevity pay in the new positions. And that's, that would be, that would actually, that would achieve that goal, and I think it would, it would be well-received. it would, it would be well received by staff.
Okay, because that's, that's where...
You've got others.
Yeah.
And that's where you're comfortable?
Yeah.
Can, can I, can I just get, can I just get a one-sentence summary?
Yeah.
So I, I get it, Shelby, thank you very much.
It'll be an algebraic sentence.
So there's the original, and there's the option one, and there's option two.
Right.
They're all the same numbers, just allocated differently.
Correct.
What is the city manager's recommendation?
My option would be option number two is what I would recommend. I like what Councilman Williams just said as far as making the pool smaller and moving up and restoring the longevity pay and the positions as well.
Call that 2B.
Okay, so alternate option two is the one that currently city manager is recommending. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll try to keep this brief, but, you know, obviously, I, we, we need to do everything we can to support our people. We need to prioritize people. We saw the life-saving earlier tonight, people do that. We need to keep our infrastructure well-maintained, and we need to keep taxes low. At the same time, affordability is one of our five pillars, and it's harder for me to see that in this budget than in past years because property values are increasing so greatly, and we're proposing to keep the exact same tax rate as last year, not provide any property tax relief, you know, to mitigate the increase that results from the property valuation increase. So again, I, I'm, I want to do everything that, you know, option 2B talks about for our people. Everything on employee compensation I support, but I do think we have to come off of last year, but this is me personally, that we have to come off of last year's tax rate to some degree, to, to include that fifth pillar of affordability in there. The way I would do that is to take option 2B that we were just discussing, and to, to move back in the, what was in the original proposal to get down to the one-year voter approval rate of reducing the capital maintenance fund transfer by 5 million, that was, that was in the original, it's not currently in alternate 2B. The reason I'm comfortable with that is that it's not absolutely guaranteed, but we have a contract as long as they think we're in good standing. You know, we're going to get these DART funds that enable us to do transportation projects, and that can replace some of the revenue that we would have used in the capital maintenance fund. So I think we have that opportunity to do all of these things for our employees and still come down on the tax rate. I would personally also support capping the economic development fund transfer. There are two options here at 10 million or 8.5 million. I'd be interested in learning more about, you know, those two, but certainly doing at least one of them. The 1.4 million decrease to cap it at 10 million was in the, again, the original recommendation to come down to the one-year voter approval rate. I would absolutely be in favor of doing that. Between those two things, that would bring us down 6.4 million, still doing every single thing that this option 2B that we just discussed would do for our employees, which I think we absolutely must do. We have to remain a destination employer, our employees deserve it, we have to take care of our employees, and we, and we have to, you know, look at where we are in comparison to the market. So I'm, I'm fully in favor of doing that, but I think we can do this through the capping the economic development fund transfer, reducing the capital maintenance transfer by 5 million. And I would also like to see us look at things like, like gym fees, things that are, that are, that are, you know, good services, but they're not your core city functions like calling 911. Because I'm, I'm a member at the Tom Mullenbeck Center, but, you know, if our employees are seeing health premiums go up 15%, if taxpayers are seeing, you know, with a home stat are seeing tax bills go up 10%, you know, then, then gym memberships should be going up 10 to 15% also to take the load off of, off of the taxpayers and employees. So that, that would be my proposal.
Mayor Protem.
Okay, it sounds like, from what I've heard, people are leaning towards option two. That's not the one that I'm most comfortable with, and I'll tell you why. Option one, I don't want to reduce the capital maintenance for a couple of reasons. One, this beautiful graph that Shelby put together shows those costs are continually going up, right? Even if they're not going to go up at the same rate, every year, you're going to keep coming back to us saying all these projects are more expensive. So the fact that we delay putting money over, that doesn't change the fact that the cost of the project is going to be more. So I would rather have more money in that fund for infrastructure projects rather than adding additional staff. And the challenge with adding additional staff, I think, is if we're asking our taxpayers to pay more money, I think that they would prefer that it be spent on fixing their roads and sewer lines than having additional employees. So I think for me, that's why I prefer option number one. I would like for us to be able to pay the ones we have more, but adding more, and then the amount that you had originally said, I think it was 5 million, that we're putting towards, that's just still very hard for me to swallow, that amount.
Actually, I think the total new employees was about, was 3.75 million.
That's correct. Oh, I'm sorry, was that, is, is that the new number if you take out the 0.5 million? Or it would be down to, on option?
No, so the, right, so there's still, there's still, there still are new hire positions. So if you look at the second, just under the reduce the new hires, it's delaying the, the new hires. There are still new hires in there. So for public safety positions, for CIP positions, there are still some in there, but we cut to be able to get down to balance the number that, that council was looking for.
They would start April 1st instead of October 1st.
Okay.
No, but in, I'm saying, what is the total amount that we would be spending on new hires?
Well, the total, the original total was 3.7 million, as he mentioned. So you're...
If we take out that 0.5...
This on his option number one, that's only $500,000. So you'd still have 3.2 that you're going to spend on hires. Now, within here, what he's suggesting, instead of hiring, which these positions like CIP coming online, your public safety positions, the DSSR, these are really on our mandated kind of, we need these positions. What he's suggesting, let's not hire them till April 1st.
Yeah.
So, and that will save you 1.6 million dollars.
I'm talking about the 0.5, the 0.5 million on option one.
Yes.
I prefer that over option two where it's not.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let me get a show of hand. This is not a, a vote tonight, so let me get a show of hands, who's in favor of the 4176 tax rate? Okay, so we have direction there. And I'm just going to say, those that are in favor of option one, please raise your hand. Okay. What, now, explain to me what 2B and 2A was?
So 2, 2B...
Or 2, 2 and 2B.
Yeah, we'll just say 2 and 2B. So option two restores some of the positions that we had taken out, so that the, the longevity still would not be increased, it would be back to the, the original amount. Option, so option two would take basically $600,000 out of the capital maintenance and put that towards, towards positions. Option 2B actually takes part of that 5 million dollars and reduces that in order to fund the longevity pay going up that we had originally proposed, as well as the positions. So there still remains a pool to be able to do compensation adjustments of 3 million dollars, but it front-loads some of the adjustments on the compensation side by funding the longevity upfront, and it also helps us with the backlog of work by funding the, the positions. But the positions would come on April 1st like the other positions as well.
So, go ahead, Shelby, real quick.
Well, first, if it makes it easier to remember, it's 2B or not 2B.
Okay. I get it, okay.
Now, I couldn't resist. So maybe, let me ask this. If we were to have our cake and eat it too, we were to keep the new hires, the longevity pay, and not delay the capital maintenance facility projects, then by taking this 2 million that we already have in the compensation study fund, we'd have an excess of $400,000. Would the economic development fund transfer be, be able to do with the $400,000 less than the 8.5 million? Cap it at 8.1 instead of 8.5?
We've already, we've already pulled back on that quite a bit.
So, Councilman, I, I, you know, I think we're, we're, again, we're scraping to, to find this. I, I did talk with Doug McDonald to do kind of a tolerance study and look at the high end of, low end of what we've done on, on an annual basis. So when I say we were in there, we were in there deep to, to look at the numbers. I think we were more comfortable at 8.5, but I also understand where council is, and, and I mean this with sincerity. We're facing choices and decisions every year from now on, and so that's a choice and a decision, and if council gives that direction, we'll go that direction.
Well, let me just ask a, a direction on 2B. Who's, who's in favor of 2B?
And, Mayor, just a clarification, do, do you want me to vote on the options even, even if I was in favor of the 41.76, or?
Yeah, I would like that, because, I mean, I think...
Yeah, yeah.
That direction has been established, 41.76.
Gotcha, well, fantastic, okay.
2, 2B is option two, but adding back in the new hires, yeah, adding back in the new hires.
Yeah, that's, that's all it is.
And, and the longevity, yeah.
So...
Keeping the new hires and the longevity.
Are we saying option one's now out of the, the...
Well, there was just, there was just two that, that raised their hand. So I'm trying, so I'm trying to, to get some direction for September 11.
2A and 2B.
Or 2B, 2 and 2B.
I thought you also brought up cutting back on the economic development to add back in the capital.
Yep.
Well, I don't want to complicate it, so I'm trying to, I mean...
Consider that withdrawn.
I just, I just need direction from council on kind of what's a general direction you want to go, and I'm going to bring it back. But I think 2B, again, that's the size of the pool, and again, that was direction from council, so just trying to make sure I comply with that direction.
So tell me 2B, those, those that would raise your hand. Okay.
I swayed for him again.
You did.
And, oh, they, they, I just, I just did want to make a clarification. I raised my hand for 2B because out of those options, I think 2B is the best, but I'll have to consider between now and the 11th, given, given that my direction on the tax rate lost out, you know, how I'll vote on the 11th. I, I always want to be transparent, so I never want to surprise anybody, but, so I wanted to put that out there.
Mayor, council, we have direction. We will bring back option 2B for the final budget adoption on the 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item.
Item number three, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2022-9 to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended. So as to rezone 19.1 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Plano Parkway and Executive Drive in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas, from corridor commercial to planned development 58 corridor commercial, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
And this is back from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is located on Plano Parkway near US 75 and also along George Bush, the President George Bush Turnpike. The request is to create a planned development district with the base corridor commercial zoning that exists today. So you can see the notice boundaries and the aerial photograph you may recollect from the zoning history, that this case was previously denied by Planning and Zoning Commission, then remanded by this body to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant did make changes regarding open space setbacks and air filtration, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did reconsider the case in August, and it was recommended by a vote of six to two back to this body. So I will just briefly review the changes that came through the Planning and Zoning Commission. The original planned development district had 150-foot requirement for open space to be set back from the expressways. That was changed to 300 feet. The 300-foot line is indicated by the red line. The green indicates the open space area on the plan. The changes, there were also changes in air filtration. Those are detailed on this slide where the outdoor air-sourced mechanical ventilation unit and a MERV 8 filter. So those are in, those have been included and are new to the planned development district. So there are two phases currently within the planned development district that has not changed from the last time you saw the case. It is in the expressway corridor future land use category. I'm going to go pretty quickly through these because this has not changed from the last time you saw it. There are a number of items in the comprehensive plan that are met, including the future land use map and dashboards, mix of uses, character-defining elements, thoroughfare plan map, bicycle plan map, parks master plan map. There are challenges with the expressway corridor environmental health map, the redevelopment of regional transportation corridors policy, but it meets the transit-oriented development policy. And then two out of three of the redevelopment and growth management policies have challenges, and that triggers findings which are required with this case. It does, however, partially meet the downtown vision and strategy update. So with that, just a quick reminder, this case does propose 501 mid-rise residential units, and there are a number of multifamily units within the area, and it is transit-oriented development. There are also single-family residence attached units being proposed, 33 of those, that are in alignment with the future land use mix of the comprehensive plan. The access to DART is 0.4 miles. There are sidewalks that provide service on Executive and the 190 Service Road. Noise mitigation, there is a setback from the 190 Frontage Road. The applicant added BURMs in Phase 1 to help mitigate pending future development of the primary office building that is on their plan, and there are balcony restrictions as well to help where the exterior noise levels exceed the standard 65 dBA requirements. There are two tracks within the PD, and then this details out, the PD stipulations, we can, the phasing is for a maximum of 260 units in the first phase that requires, includes required open space and the attached units of the SFA townhouse units. And then in Phase 2, it requires 70,000 square feet of non-residential uses to be permitted at the same time as the mid-rise residential units. So, and that's at the time of certificate of occupancy. Additionally, you see all these other standards, noise, air filtration setbacks, height restrictions, use restrictions. I'd be glad to answer questions regarding these. There is a governance association and design standards. We had three different letters of support from adjacent property owners totaling 12 acres and 49% of the gross acreage in the 200 feet surrounding. In addition, we had 12 responses of support, 2 neutral, and 35 in opposition for 49 total unique responses. We did have 11 duplicate responses and five outside Plano received for a total of 60 responses, and those are mapped, those in Plano are mapped on the screen. So the requested changes are summarized here for you, 500 mid-rise units, 33 single-family residence attached units, modified development standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission again did recommend approval by a vote of six to two, and we're available for questions you might have on this case.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Thanks, Christina. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We do. The developer or the applicant has a presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Muns and council members. Excited to be back here tonight. Again, my name is Brian Wolf, 4403 North Central Expressway, partner at Bay West Development. Excited to be back here with P&amp;Z council, P&amp;Z approval this time. I was going to go through the changes that we made from, from our previous application. Ms. Day did a wonderful job at that, so I... Ms. Day did a wonderful job at that, so I don't need to go through that. I think the one I'll highlight is a recommendation that Councilmember Smith made in our last council hearing to increase our air filtration. We increased it to the MERV 8 standard, which was the same standard as the J Place project that was recently approved not far from our project. But I'm here to answer any questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one. I do have a concern about the mid-rise office complex here, and we talked about this briefly. But, you know, we're seeing issues now with occupying offices. You know, right now, your first phase, you're going to be building the apartments and the single-family residence, and then you're going to kick off and start, go to the second phase, which would be the mid-rise and additional residential property. My concern is about that building in that it's in a prime location that we could use, if you could develop as such, a high-rise instead of a mid-rise and convert that to a mixed-use facility within itself. We're seeing that throughout the Dallas-Fort Worth area where they're taking offices on the middle, first level or second level would be retail and/or amenities. The next five levels would be offices, and then above that, we would have residential and/or the hotel that you're talking there. Did you guys consider that when you went back and after zoning and everybody came back? And really, a sense from what I got from the P&amp;Z meetings were the place was too valuable just to have a mid-rise. So did you look at that with your guys and see if that was a possibility down the line?
Yeah, we have. Unfortunately, it's economically unviable today. That's the quick answer, and so what we're proposing is something that we think best works today. That being said, we have time between our Phase 1 and our Phase 2 to make adjustments as market conditions change. And so I think we heard that loud and clear from P&amp;Z. We've heard it from council, and so we'll continue to, look, it benefits us to build a high-rise and more density on that site to the extent it's economically available. And so, you know, we'd certainly continue to look at that as we kickstart this project, build the park, have a centerpiece location here, and continue to look at that option.
What I'm getting at is that if we look at the higher floors as being residential, I'm seeing that on the west side of Plano. Those high-rises there are full, right? And you go down the North Dallas Tollway Corridor, their high-rises for residential are full. Uptown, they're full. The fact that you have a, it'll be a higher rent for sure because of the cost, and it'll be one floor that, you know, senior citizens could move into with no maintenance, easy to get around, that sort of thing. I think that'd be something that we need to examine down the line to make this more of a welcoming beacon to Plano. So I think you need to consider that.
We will. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Brian, appreciate you coming back. Appreciate you listening to our suggestions we had when you guys were here the last time, and, you know, everybody's kind of had a chance to look at P&amp;Z, you know, look at it again, like what they saw. One thing, I guess I would like to bounce around with you here. The way you've got it phased now is you want to do, what, I think, 260 multifamily and then the 33 townhomes, you know, the first phase and the BURMs and things like that. And then, once you get that done, Phase 2 next would be, you have to do the CO for the 70,000 of, you know, of non-residential before you start on the other apartments there. What about, would you be willing to modify this to move the 70,000 non-residential as part of Phase 1? And the reason I ask you that is, I guess, you know, I heard some of the thing, I watched P&amp;Z, you did very good. And I think as, you know, Councilmember Horn expressed, the office, new office market right now, the occupancy is not super good. You know, you mentioned that also, and it's very expensive to sit on things and not have them be productive. But with that in mind, what I don't want to see happen is everybody's gone to a lot of trouble, you guys gone to a lot of trouble, we've gone around with council and P&amp;Z a couple times. I don't want to see us end up with just a 260-unit multifamily development with 33 single-family attached houses that would probably end up being rented also if that were to happen. I'd like to see this full development, you know, come to fruition. So, and I think the way to make that, I'd feel comfortable making that happen, you know, for you guys, would be if you could make that commitment that that would be part of the Phase 1 and not wait till Phase 2. And it could be, you know, could be a higher, could be, you know, something like Councilman Horn had mentioned, or even forget the office stuff and you get the, you know, first-class, you know, hotel, you know, going there because of the commercial you've got across there with the city line and all, and you could move the setback, you know, some even, you know, get it further away and have a little larger footprint and go with a hotel route. So that's what I ask, that's what I'd like to see you do to make this thing really come to fruition in the way that I think you've shown us it will and ensure us that it will happen that way.
Yeah, I'd love to do that, too. Unfortunately, that's just not the realities of this site as it sits today and the surrounding neighborhood. And so I think what we've tried to demonstrate in detail over our numerous P&amp;Z and previous council hearings is we need to be able to kickstart this project somehow and create a new vibe to this area, to create the demand to be able to do an office project or a luxury hotel project or whatever else that could make this the staple that Councilmember Horn is talking about. And so what we're asking for is allow us to do that, allow us to kickstart that, because unfortunately, just as it sits today, and look, we've had it out in the market for the three-plus years that we've owned it, to be able to do, build the suit for a corporate user. There's just too many other options. This unfortunately isn't the west side of Plano from a demand perspective. Unfortunately, it's not even City Line and Richardson right now, which has, as I'm sure you know, a bunch of undeveloped office that is available right now as well that are closer to those amenities and have some unique characteristics that our site just doesn't have. And so we're just unable, we've tried, we've looked at it 100 different ways, we're just unable to do that today, which is why we've kind of proposed this to allow us to kickstart and create that vibrancy in this area to allow us to create the man, to that demand.
And I appreciate your honesty on this. And again, that's kind of really my concern about, you know, the whole project is because as difficult as you're indicating it would be now to do something other than the multifamily. And I guess my concern is, I have no doubt that you delivered a good product for us, but I don't want it to end up to be just another, you know, multifamily complex because as I said, you want to bring a new vibe and get things going. Adding additional multifamilies where we have quite a bit of multifamily already there and a new multifamily with a J Place, you know, that's going to be coming online, that's not really going to change the vibe at all. So I guess I'm looking for some way to have the assurance that we, as the city, we will get the type of project that you're looking at, and we won't just get this one little phase going and then, oop, sorry, it didn't work out, but, you know, we appreciate, you know, getting it here.
Totally understood. So it's not just the multifamily? Like, we consider the 1.4-acre Plaza Green as kind of a central key component to this project. This area has no open green space, this little corner of Plano.
It's a concrete jungle.
Right, and so while it may look like, oh, they're just going to build the 260 units in a Phase 1, we think that that park space, not only for our project and our tenants within our building, but the office building adjacent to us, which, you know, in their letter that they wrote to us, thinks that that creates more demand for their space so that their office workers have a place to go outside and have lunch.
My defense is in that building that you're talking about. So, yeah, they're forward as well.
So that's our give on that, right? That's our ability to create something other than just, oh, we're going to build some more multifamily units, and hopefully that creates more of a vibe. You know, we've thought long and hard about this in putting something there that is substantial. 1.4 acres isn't a small Plaza Green as well, and so that was what we came up with to be able to do that. So hopefully that satisfies you as council to be able to look at this project and be able to approve it and help realize that it will kind of kickstart the revitalization of this whole area, which we think really needs it.
Okay, great. Thanks. Appreciate your honesty.
Yep.
Yep, Byron. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jennifer Groisman.
Jennifer Groisman, Plano. This property is not ripe for housing. It is next to two major highways. I lived near a highway once, and at night, my husband and I could hear the cars passing our bedroom window. It was so noisy that my husband could not sleep. We didn't live there for long. Now, some people think that having the DART station nearby will mean that residents will walk to the station to go into work. According to Google Maps, the station is an 11- to 12-minute walk. No one in their right minds will be walking in 100-plus degree heat for five minutes, let alone 11, in a suit and a tie. When the concrete mall redevelopment is done, there will be plenty of housing only half a mile away from the Fries property. The area won't need more. When I look at this area, I notice something that is missing, a reasonably priced grocery store. Whole Foods is on the other side of the highway. However, it is expensive for most people and in Richardson, so they get the sales taxes. The nearest average Plano grocery store is a 39-minute walk away. The Super Target is 32-minute walk. Walmart is also too far. If you want to have walkable neighborhoods, they need average-priced grocery stores. So a grocery store would be a good fit for this property. The Fries building could be converted to an HEB, Kroger, or other large regularly-priced grocery store. As we have seen from the HEB on Spring Creek and Preston, people will flock to it. So please vote no on this zoning case. Thank you.
Cassandra Bowle.
Thank you again. One more message here. Cassandra Bowle, 4120 Sonora Drive. Just heard some numbers here, so 33 out of 260, about 12% of a chance for homeowners, young homeowners and retirees to build some equity. We have talked about affordability, and I realize that this is an unusual spot. It is an eyesore. It is a concrete jungle, and I'm not sure exactly what draw there is for a hotel. We don't have anything in Plano that would draw folks to want to stay in a luxury hotel. It's going to be tall. I'm hoping that other uses could be considered, especially because we just need to have some things like ice rinks, things that would draw visitors to Plano. Hockey's a big, big thing right now for many of the students as another athletic event, so. It's been a long time. It's been several, through several variations. I still am in opposition to it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ellen Layer.
Ellen Layer, I live on Town Bluff. This location that was previously Fries is appropriate for its current corridor commercial zoning. It is a critical location to benefit Plano with this zoning classification. This property is a gateway to Plano, and this proposed zoning change would be detrimental. As Councilman Horn was pointing out, it is a very important location for Plano. It has a, it's kind of like a welcome to Plano area, and the delay of the sale, pardon me, is of course greatly affected by the two-year COVID restrictions. I believe that we would be much better served by giving it a little more time and possibly getting a good corporate company to come in there. The requested zoning change is not in keeping with the comprehensive plan. It requires variances and has not been through the requirements to be deemed an exception. Even though it has been touted as walkable, if you've been in that area, you probably would not agree with that particular description. Jennifer Groisman made some points on it, so I won't repeat those. City staff and P&amp;Z declined this zoning change, and those factors do still apply. Approval of the proposed zoning change would be short-sighted and against the best interest of Plano and its residents. Thank you.
The last speaker is Pat Greer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmen. I am Pat Greer. I live at 3012 Jomar Drive. I've been in Plano for 41 or 42 years, long time. Some of you aren't even that old. I'm encouraging you tonight to vote no on this proposal. I would like to maintain the suburban character of Plano, and the organization that I have worked with has been, had that effort for a number of years. And this is a perfect location, a gateway entry point to Plano. And as such, if you just look at the land where it's located and the visibility along those highways, Central Expressway and Plano Parkway, it's a perfect place for a corridor commercial project as it is currently zoned. To rezone it and add some housing destroys our suburban character. We, there was good thought given in the comprehensive plan to a corridor commercial zoning, and this fits it perfectly. And as I said, I regard this as a premier entry point to the east side of Plano. I think that we need to recognize that and maintain it. I heard comments previous that we are tired of seeing it sit there, run down, but we've just come through a couple of years of a pandemic. To expect anything different in terms of office redevelopment is a little short-sighted. I believe that staff initially has done a good job of evaluating this. They turned it back. It's been an ongoing negotiation with council members, P&amp;Z. To me, you're pushing really hard to make something happen that maybe in your heart knows it's not quite the right thing. I encourage you to vote no on this and give office time to get restored in the city of Plano. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and confine the comments to the council.
Thank you. We've seen this before, of course. I do appreciate the applicant's efforts to modify the plans. Some of the things that were discussed in the planning and zoning meeting and on council before, I'd characterize them as fiddling around the edges of the concerns that people had about this proposed project. Staff highlighted a number of those concerns, and I think staff got it right. As I've said before, this is a very special place. We only have a handful of these in our city, and I agree, what's there now is And I agree, what's there now is an eyesore. Everybody's tired of looking at it, and we do need to do something with it, but doing something doesn't mean doing anything. Any decision we make to develop here has decades-long implications. Now, I understand that right now, in 2023, this isn't a viable prospect for commercial development. As was noted, right across George Bush, there are, there's commercial that just isn't being filled. But the world right now in 2023 is very different than it was two years ago, and it's going to be different two years from now. But we're not looking at a two-year-long decision. We're looking at a decades-long decision. And increasingly lately, I'm trying to take a very long-term view of the decisions that we make on council, like a 50-year view. I'm trying to think of the Plano we're going to leave behind after we're all dead. And this property, this intersection right here, has the potential, along with the Cullen Creek redevelopment, with the right project, to really lend toward transforming the east side in a meaningful way. With a very, again, special piece of property for which we only have a handful. And there are intersections like this, the corners of major interstates, where a little place down the road called Texas Instruments has been very successful. IKEA, you know, Granite Park here in Plano. These intersections may lay fallow for a while, waiting for the right opportunity, but the right opportunity can really transform an area. And I appreciate that the property is kind of burning a hole in the applicant's pocket, waiting for conditions to change. I do sympathize with that. But again, doing something doesn't mean doing anything, and I think there are very few potential prospects that could really capitalize on this intersection and what it would mean for the future of Plano, and I don't believe we've seen that yet. So I'm, my position has not changed since the last meeting. I'm still not in support. I think we should wait until the right concept comes along for the transformation of Plano.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I agree that this is a special place for Plano, which is why I think we shouldn't just let it sit there and keep dying. So I respectfully disagree with you, Councilmember Williams. I think that we need to do something to spur the redevelopment of that whole area. And so I think this park that they're proposing will help others around there reinvest in their properties, and I think it will help spur redevelopment throughout the 75 corridor, which I think we desperately need. So I'm in support of this.
Councilman Horn?
Yes. People back here are just complaining about the apartments that are being proposed there, but I would dare for you to go see R190, the apartment complex next to this place. It has a greater-than-95% occupancy, and those people are using the Dart red line, and they also walk into downtown to visit the Fillmore Pub and shop in that area. What you're seeing in this area is housing for employees that both utilize the Dart, but also they have a straight shot to our research technology overlay district due east of that. They go Plano Parkway, and they're working over in that area. And it's a straight drive, so most of their impact, driving impact, does not provide congestion to the west side of 75. If you look at the comprehensive plan, it meets the future land use map requirements, comp plan requirements, except for environmental health. And on that, we have two elements. We have the noise, and we also have the particulate, the dust. The applicant is proposing to put MERV8 filter, filtration systems on their intake units to mitigate the dust. He'll also meet the STC standards of 45 decibels within the interior of the building, so you will not be hearing any road noise once you're inside. Now, please note, when you look at the decimal readings that were provided by MNNR, I think I got that right, they were looking at a night-day timeline there, a weighted average that. I would put, I would put this theory out to you from a health benchmark perspective that you don't spend that much time on a patio. You may spend at the most an hour during the course of a given day, so the health impact would not be like as though you're working next to a jet engine all day long. So that benchmark is, though we got to be cognizant of it, is mostly used as a guideline as to what designers have to meet or exceed on the interior of those buildings. It meets the comprehensive plan, future land use, desirable character dividing elements, and it also meets the thoroughfare plan map, the bicycle transportation plan, and the parks master plan, with the addition of the green space that they're contributing there. So you heard my position earlier, what I'd like to see with the mid-rise office building. I'd like to think that within the two years after we have these units' constructions, that the market changes. We look at the sheer economics, that what's can be built there to help us get that high rise. I'd like to see a, really, you look at that instead of adding another 100-room key apartment or hotel along that frontage road. I'd rather see it as a beacon for entry into the state or city of Plano. So, but because of these elements here, and because we have the housing need, and I really don't want to wait two years for this building to be vacant, because I'm not seeing a whole lot of activity occurring right now on some of our other vacant buildings that are in more desirable property, I'm going to vote for this passage.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I will take a smart brevity approach to these comments. I appreciate the applicant's attempts to work with the city, and I appreciate the great meeting I had with the applicant. Nonetheless, the reasons that I stated for voting against this last time haven't been changed by the changes that have been made subsequently, so I'll be compelled to vote no again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I guess I better make some comments, Brian. So, Brian, I commend you. You've worked this project to death. We've been talking, I think you've been approaching council members for the past, what, two years, two or three years? And the first time you actually pulled it off, the proposal, because you wanted to make some revisions. You went back to planning and zoning, and you got denied, and you appealed up to here, and then you went back to Plan, P&amp;Z, and this time you got 62 approval. And I want to commend you for that. And I always support my planning and zoning board. If they are recommending that this is a good project to go forward, then I am going to, unless I have a real severe, big reason why I should not follow my board and commission's recommendation, and I don't see one. But like I said, I commend you for your persistence and perseverance, and I hope that you will make this into something that we are proud of. It is a gateway to Plano, and we want something that, you know, that is not, you know, all concrete and stone walls. We want something that, that will, you know, express Plano the way that we, you know, we've seen Plano. So anyway, good luck, and I hope that you will make it something we are proud of.
Councilmember Horn?
In the interest of smart brevity, I'd like to agree with Mayor Protem, Deputy Mayor Protem, and Councilmember Horn, and I still feel the same way I did with the comments that I made the last time this came before council, so I'm just going to speak on any new things that have come up. I've had a few people email about wanting a grocery store there, and there's a lot of property there that's around the Fry's facility that's been sitting empty, that could have housed a grocery store for many, many years. And so I don't think with, without having the foot traffic there, that retail and grocery is just not going to be viable. And I think that's a great location for a grocery store, but it's not going to be successful if we don't have the foot traffic there. So same with, I love the idea of the skating rink or the...
Pickleball.
Well, actually, that was one idea that I did discuss with someone, that Councilmember Williams brought up, the decades-long implications. The pickle, if, pickleball courts and putting a destination pickleball resort hotel, quite honestly, would, I think, do very well there. I do think there's a need for a hotel there. I almost didn't bring it up because I knew I would be getting grief over it. But there is a need for, my stepdaughter got married in downtown Plano last year, and there was not really a nice hotel to direct anyone to right around there. But we, if you are following pickleball, the largest, the pickleball tournament is coming to North Texas this November, and now Texas is home to more pickleball professionals than any other state. So there's definitely a draw for that, but that would allow you to develop the land, Brian, put the pickleball courts in. If it doesn't work, those are a lot cheaper to tear out and put the commercial space there when, when the demand returns. So I think that could be a win-win, although I don't think you'll have to tear them out. I think you'll just have to build more of them, to be honest with you. But yeah, I really, I really think that the foot traffic needs to be there for the retail to be developed. Continue to see the support from the neighbors. I mean, Congressman Self was here tonight talking about the rail down there in 1873. That's what started Plano. That's, and now we have the silver line that will be coming through and just, and adding to the traffic there. So I think there's definitely, I think it's a good location. We've got a shortage of housing. I, I think that, I'm sorry, I tried to read my notes.
Pickleball.
Oh, short, no, shorts, pickleball, pickleball. Short-sighted, I'm more concerned about not doing anything, and that the property owners have been sitting on it for three years now. I'm concerned what they may do with it if, if it can't be put to use. They've been very persistent. They've been very patient. They've worked really hard to present and revise and come back with other things that will meet some of the concerns that we have. So I, I'm in support of this.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I am a year older today, but I can still do math, and I think it's going to be pretty clear that the project's going to get approved. I would like to be one of those votes for that, but unfortunately, you know, we're talking, a lot of talk about the gateway to Plano and this being a real spot, and it'll be standout, but if it just ends up being more multifamily, even though I'm sure they're going to be very nice, it's really no different than what you already see when you're coming. And I drive that road a lot, believe me, back and forth. So if I just felt that there was the guarantee that we would get, if, you know, we're being asked to change the zoning from our comprehensive plan, if we were certain that we would be getting something other than just the multifamily, I would still be supportive of it. I think we as council certainly tried to give, you know, every, and as I say, I think doing the math, it's going to be fine, but I just wanted to explain, you know, why they had to process, because we are very concerned as a council about, about the city and the development move forward, because we don't have a lot of land left. I mean, let's face it, there's not a lot of land left, and we want to be certain that the land that we do have, that people do bring projects to us, that they do get built the way that they're proposed. So nothing against you, but markets and economies change right now. It's, it is probably pretty iffy that an office project is going to work there. The hotel or some kind of hybrid like Councilman Horn had talked about, I think, might be feasible, but we have to get to that score. So anyway, I think it's going to pass, but I just can't support it the way it is, so sorry.
Well, I appreciate all the work you've done on this project. The 1.4-acre area is, just that alone, to replace what's there right now would be terrific. We work every day to make sure that we have a workforce that's available throughout all of Plano. And one of the biggest things that we have is a shortage of housing for that workforce, and so it's, it's really important for us to be able to continue to provide that, to keep that viability going. This also, once, once you start putting it in the ground and we start having tenants, then that also creates revenue for the city, which we definitely need. We, we're doing quite well in regard to vacancy in all of our office space, but it's still significant compared to what it was a few years ago. And we're, we're learning that hybrid office is always going to be the way it is today. I mean, there are a lot of companies that will never make their people come back five days a week. So we, that's always going to have a big question mark. The beauty that you've got here, the walkability to the Dart Station, I walked it, and it is not far at all. And there'll be people using that consistently. So with that being said, I'm also in favor of this and looking for a...
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve item number three. Please vote. Motion passes five to three. We need findings formed. We'll take a five-minute break. Motion passes five to three. We need findings formed. We'll take a five-minute break. We'll call the meeting back to order. Oh, sorry, Lisa. Yeah. Moving on to item four.
Item number four. Public hearing consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2023-09 to reduce the thousand-foot separation, foot-distance separation from tattooing and permanent cosmetics use to the residential district to the west, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2, as heretofore amended, granting specific use permit number 42 for tattooing and permanent cosmetics to the second story suite situated on .1 acre of land located on the east side of Parker Road, 190 feet, 195 feet south of Premier Drive in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas, presently zoned corridor commercial, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, savings clause, severability clause, publication clause, and effective date.
All right. This zoning case is in the US 75 corridor near Parker Road. It is a request for a specific use permit for tattooing and permanent cosmetics in a leased space in a retail shopping center. It is uniquely on the second floor of a two-story building. So that is an element within the ordinance before you. The graphic in front of you shows, represents the leased space and the 200-foot and 500-foot notice buffers that the city utilized in noticing the zoning case. This graphic represents, the yellow area is the area of the leased space and the building in which the leased space exists, along Parker Road. One important element of this case is that this land use does require a setback from residential zoning. And there are two residential areas. You see Russo Place to the north, Thunderbird Estates to the west, and those distances, the closest being 617 feet to Russo Place. So the distance requirement in the zoning ordinance is 1,000 feet, but council can waive that requirement if it finds that it will not be a harmful situation. So that is a finding that we'll be looking for from the council tonight. So the comprehensive plan shows this as the expressway corridors category on the future land use map. There are no changes recommended to the mix of uses based on this request. So that makes the policy analysis pretty straightforward. It meets the land use policies and is neutral to other policies or they're not applicable. We did not get a response from property owners in the immediate vicinity. But across the city, we did get a number of responses. This analysis was somewhat complex. We had 46 in support, one neutral, and five in opposition. However, there were 14 duplicate responses. There are actually 66 total, but 14 were duplicate. However, I want to note that there were only nine unduplicated responses within the city of Plano. That's why the map shows so few locations. There were two unverified addresses within Plano. Just, those were addresses, when we tried to run them through GIS, they're not legitimate addresses within the city. So we took those out, and then we ended up with four in support and five in opposition within Plano. We had a number, you probably noticed in your packet, that were outside the state of Texas. So just people in support generally of the business. So with that, we're looking, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the specific use permit by a vote of eight to zero. And in order to issue the permit, the council must again reduce the thousand-foot distance requirement as shown and find it's not detrimental or injurious to the public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise offensive to the neighborhood. With that, I am available for questions.
Any questions for staff? Thanks, Christina. I'll open the public hearing. Do you have any speakers?
I do. We have the applicant, Randy and Roy Dawson.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Randy Dawson. I live in Lancaster, Texas. However, I am a long-term member of Presquid Baptist Church. Thank you, Pastor Jack. God bless you. Tonight, we are here for your vote for approval for a specific use permit to open and operate a family tattoo studio in Plano. It is located near Highway 75 and Parker. The name of the business will be called Two Groovy Studios. I'm a real estate, commercial real estate broker. I've been practicing for over four decades. I do commercial real estate, retail, and also do property management. I represent my brother, Roy Dawson, who's also a corporate real estate broker, and his son, Ryan Dawson, who is the gifted and talented artist in the family. Tonight, Roy and Ryan will present, and with Kathy, Ryan's mother, will also come up to speak as well. Steve Saltis, Ryan's uncle, professor at University of Virginia, may also speak, just depending on if his plane has landed on time or not. We have a short PowerPoint presentation using a drone to view the residential district for the studio location. The aerial photos will provide you with an accurate view showing how scheduled, secluded we are from the residential districts. The subject property is located at 301 West Parker, Suite 213, in the Russo Village Shopping Center. It is a secluded location, being the property does not have any frontage on Parker or Highway 75, and it's located on the second floor. The space is about 1,423 square feet. We have two residential districts. One is due west at a distance of 936 feet. The subdivision name is Thunderbird Estates. The other residential district is called Russo Place One, which is northwest at a distance of 617 feet from the studio. Both subdivisions from the studio are even further isolated because you miss crossover Premier Drive. So if we can, we can just take a look at my PowerPoint presentation. And I think, slide forward. So these are the people that will present, Roy Dawson, Ryan Dawson, Kathy Saltis, and perhaps Steve Saltis. The studio planner requests for a specific use permit for the family tattoo studio. The proposed location is 301 West Parker, Suite 213, Plano, Texas. Again, my name is Randy Dawson, and the studio is Two Groovy Studios. This is the shopping center which the business will reside, 301 West Parker, Suite 213. So on this photograph here, you will see where it says "studio" just above where it says "Marines." That is behind an elevator shaft, so we're not real visible. It's not a very leasable space. We picked this space for a specific reason, because my nephew, Ryan Dawson, he primarily works off of appointment only. So direct exposure to the street is not necessary. The Space Marines, Army, Navy, Air Force, all that is currently vacant at this time. Just another visual of the vacancy up there. And again, we will be right there where it says "Marines." This view here is showing where Parker Road is. I want to get to a better view here. I want to get my aerial photographs. So I'm going to skip through this. This is just more of the shopping center itself. There's a studio. And again, there's a lot of commercial around this property. Okay, here's what I really want you all to take a look at. I do liquor stores and represent liquor stores, and I have 26 under my management right now. So I deal with this issue often enough. And this one, the rule is, as a crow flies. So it's not as you drive around to get to residential district. It's from door, from the front door of the studio to the nearest property line. So you can see the, on the far left-hand side, you see the shopping center. It says 617 feet to the nearest corner of that subdivision. But you can see substantial amount of commercial real estate, major thoroughfares you had to cross to get there. Same thing on the other side, where we're 936 feet. Again, a lot of commercial property you have to go to to get, as the crow flies, only gives us 936 feet. Again, this aerial here was taken from about 200 feet. So again, I just want you to just kind of take a look at it. Where we are located, the front of our business will face out into a big parking lot. And it's just not really a big exposure to the general public. Again, he works primarily off of appointments. So again, just some more aerial photographs showing the residence. This one's just from the neighborhood to where the shopping center is. As you see, you had to go across a major thoroughfare, over a top of a bank, and then before you get to the back of a shopping center. Again, just another aerial photograph, so you get a better view, the shorter of the two distances, 617 feet. So again, we took this location strategically placed. We've worked on it for four months. And I would like to tell, say, one thing about Parker McDowell. I have done many, many projects over the many decades, and none of the projects run very smooth. And I have to tell you that with his, Parker's help, getting this process through, getting it done, getting all the information, getting it in order, he responded within minutes, hours, to our responses and questions that were critical to be able to meet all the deadlines that we had to make to meet the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing originally. So Parker McDowell, thank you very much for all your effort. Very good job, because I do have horror stories. So with this, we'll conclude my part of the presentation. I would like my brother, Roy Dawson, he's a commercial real estate, he's a real estate business broker. He would like to come up and say a few words. And I would like to say that we do have our family here. This is a family business. My nephew, Ryan, is incredibly talented artist, and he will show you some of his work he does, not just tattoos, but the incredible artwork he does as well. But his wife is here, his cousins are here, his mom is here, his other cousin is here, his dad, and family, friends, relatives are all here to support him in this venture, and we're just hoping to get your approval tonight. So I'll turn it over to Roy.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Roy Dawson, and I've lived in Los Rios neighborhood for the last 17 years. And I want to express my deep appreciation for our vibrant city and thriving economy. With over 40 years of experience in the real estate business and as an active corporate real estate broker licensed in the state of Texas, I've had the privilege in witnessing Plano's growth firsthand. As I approach the next phase of my life, I have set my sights on retiring from the real estate industry and focusing on my family's tattoo business with my son, Ryan Dawson. Lost my place. I firmly believe that there's room for another tattoo studio in Plano, considering there's only three active studios at this time. As responsible business owners, we value our partnership with the city of Plano and are committed to being good neighbors. Two Groovy Studios will work closely with the city and state to ensure compliance with all regulations and guidelines. We firmly believe that our business will bring creativity, experience, and a valuable service to the city of Plano, and we are eagerly anticipating the opportunity to serve the community for many years. At this time, we have signed a lease with Haggard Property Group. The lease is subject to approval of the S U P. At the end of the day, I'm asking the city council members to approve the S U P, not for just me, but for our entire family. Ryan, to me, represents our youth and the future of Plano entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I got something else today. Meet the family. Randy kind of already did that, but here's the family again. We were at the Bloom Festival not too long ago. I have two grandchildren, Noah and Luca. We have a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother, Deanna, that helps with the kids. Next presenter is my son, Ryan Dawson, who I love very much. Next presenter is my son, Ryan Dawson, who I love very much.
Good evening, Council. You'll have to bear with me. I'm about as good at this as my dad is. My name is Ryan Dawson. I live in Dallas, Texas, and I'm the artist in the family, as you can probably tell. I've been creating art my entire life and going on nine years tattooing. I specialize in black and gray realism and portrait style tattooing. My goal is to bring the residents of Plano and beyond a safe, professional, fun space to an ever-growing industry. I want to go over how we operate within the industry to kind of familiarize you guys with how the process works. Most importantly, the process and the ability to protect the young ones under 18 from getting tattoos. We follow all state law and DSHS regulations regarding this matter. We have a template for the paperwork from the State Health Department that is filled out prior to any tattooing with age, name, address, et cetera. We then check their ID and paperwork and correspond the information provided with their ID. In today's world, we know it can be, some things can be manipulated, so we do use our judgment as well in that process. Copies of the paperwork and ID are then kept on hand for a period of two years per State Health Department regulations. Under no circumstances will anybody under the age of 18 be allowed a tattoo. The studio will be subject to an annual inspection through the State Health Department. All artists in the studio will be required to have a bloodborne pathogens certificate, which is renewed And with full understanding and good practice in cross-contamination. Needles are single-use and disposable, which are then placed in sharp containers, similar to what you would see at a doctor's office. A contracted company which specializes in biohazards and sharps then picks up that material when needed. Equipment that is needed for reuse, such as trays, machines, et cetera, are wrapped with a barrier film to help protect against cross-contamination from one client to the next. And we also use a medical-grade disinfectant called Maticide, which has a six-minute contact time that we use to clean in-between clients as well. Last thing I wanted to add was actually one of my favorite quotes my dad happened to say to me. Circa 2013, my dad asked me what I wanted to do in life. I told him, "I think I'm going to tattoo, Dad." My dad told me, "Don't you think it's more of a hobby?" Here we are tonight, Council, hopefully turning this hobby into a father-son venture. Thank you, guys. Oh, I do have a slide, too. Here's, oh, no. Okay. Here's some of my work, mainly black and gray realism, some color, Here's some of my pencil artwork. We have Dak Prescott, which I actually sent to the fan club and-
I've got to jump in here and say something. This artwork up here is done with a number two pencil, and that is all. Some of these photographs, these pencil artworks, look like photographs when you see them up front, and they have ended up in some very nice homes as well. Anyway, it's hard for him to brag on himself.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I understand you're very proud of your work, and I understand your entire family's very proud of you. It shows. So I only have one question. So at this point in Plano, there are two other tattoo shops, right? So is your service going to sort of be differentiated, like serve a different clientele than those two other tattoo shops?
Yes, ma'am. So we, myself, including three to four other artists, we're mainly appointment-based. So we do have a following of the clientele. That'll be more on that. And it kind of helps with the impulsivity sometimes that comes along with tattoos, especially in our, you know, youth and younger people, maybe 21.
I guess I didn't answer my question. So the other two tattoo shops, have you had a chance to go and visit those shops?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So basically, what you're trying to tell me is that each tattoo artist basically have their own following-
Correct.
-and followers. So wherever you go, they'll just follow you. They don't just go shopping, tattoo shopping, different stores?
Yeah, it's a little bit more, once they kind of get comfortable in the situation as far as their artist goes, they're typically kind of staying that way.
And then you get, and you get your customer base expansion from referral?
Mainly word of mouth, some social media platforms as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
My brother Steve Saltis is not going to be joining us today. My name is Kathy Mason. I am Ryan Dawson's mom. My brother Steve Saltis was supposed to join us today, but he was coming from the Northwest. I'll wrap this up. Very appreciative of the opportunity to stand in front of all of you. Mayor Munn, you and I have a special bond, being the third graduating class of Plano Senior High School, correct? One of the largest-
You look very familiar.
Yeah. I doubt it, as there were close to 16-
I kept thinking that all night, so now I know.
There were close to 1,600 of us that year, which was unbelievable.
It was a big class.
I will not age us any more than I have, but yes, we shared that. And my brother was lucky enough to share his graduation date with one of the P and Z guys, so we had that going for us. I've worked many years in the Plano area. The team that was here from Medical City Plano was some that I worked with prior to what I do now. I'm a nurse practitioner at Baylor Plano. And I just want to say that this is a love project for our whole family. It's not just a young man doing something. It's something that we are committed to this city and want to make sure that you all will be proud of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Rick. I'm sorry.
First tattoos on me, mayor. Just quick, what are your planned hours of operation? Are you just by appointment? Or are you going to be open set hours?
Yes, it would mainly be appointment only, but it would be from a time, Monday through Thursday would be 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. roughly. And then it would be Friday, Saturday, maybe a little bit longer, maybe noon to 10:00 p.m. And Sunday would be probably around 1:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Okay, so kind of consistent with some of the other businesses that are in that area there.
Correct.
Restaurants and other things. Okay, great. That's the only question I had. Thank
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second. Oh.
Got it.
Why can't y'all be that fast? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item Number Four. Please vote. Motion passes seven to one. Thank you. Next item.
Item number five, Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance as Requested in Zoning Case 2023-11 to amend Article 15 Use-Specific Regulations of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance of the City, Ordinance Number 2015-5-2, is heretofore amended pertaining to backyard cottage regulations, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
All right. Case 11 is related to, is amending Article 15 to comply with the law after a recent legal decision, and specifically is related to our backyard cottage regulations. There was a case out of the Fifth Circuit that found that occupancy requirements for rental activities violate the dormant commerce clause, so we're looking to amend 15-1800 of the use-specific regulations regarding backyard cottages that state that a property owner must occupy either the main dwelling unit or the backyard cottage as a permanent residence. This amendment would remove that occupancy requirement. At the same time, it will retain other requirements that still require a deed restriction on the property. So it cannot be subdivided. This is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, Guiding Principles, Land Use Actions, Neighborhood Conservation, and Special Housing Needs. P and Z did recommend this approval seven to zero, and I'm available for questions on this item. Are you going to open the public hearing?
Oh, I need to do that. I open the public hearing. Any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public.
Motion, no, motion to approve.
I really wanted to hear Christina talk.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve Agenda Item Number Five. Please vote. Try it again, Julie. It's all right. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Item number six, Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance as Requested in Zoning Case 2023-12 to repeal certain sections and amend Article 4 amendments, Article 7 nonconformities, Article 10 non-residential districts, Article 12 planned development districts, Article 17 landscaping and tree preservation, and Article 23 exterior wall construction standards of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance of the City, Ordinance Number 2015-5-2, as heretofore amended pertaining to recent state legislative actions and to ensure compliance with state law, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, severability clause, publication clause, and effective date.
All right. Case 12 is amending various articles of the zoning ordinance, which you've heard, to increase compliance with state law. Also of note is that there were so many changes this year that we did ask P and Z to call an additional public hearing because we needed to bring back a second case to continue to, a second set of amendments, just because of the complexity. So you'll see more changes forthcoming. So this is our first pass at these bills. So we have House Bill 2127, 3699, and Senate Bill 929 for you this evening. We also are going to look back at a bill from 2019, House Bill 2439, kind of revisit that briefly. So House Bill 2127, this is super preemption, which I believe you're all familiar with. So the way we were concerned about it impacting us, the zoning ordinance requires a specific delay in action in bringing forth a zoning case. And because this bill defines a process for a claimant to bring action against a municipality, we did not want that additional delay in the zoning ordinance, because we think it'll harm the city's ability to respond to any action. So we want that restriction of the 36 days on filing a zoning restriction, petition. We're looking to reduce that requirement to our notice standards. That will give the city additional time to respond to any petition that may be filed against the city. That way, we have more time to respond if we are to have a lawsuit filed against us. So I know this is small on the screen, but it is also, I believe, in your packet. So it shows just the additional time. It's a few days, but we think it may be meaningful. We still will be required to meet all the notice requirements in the zoning ordinance. After P and Z or council were to call a public hearing for a zoning action, we still have to send notices. So all those standard requirements will be met. We just won't have that additional time delay between calling a public hearing and sending notices. So I think it will just provide additional protection for the city in the event of a lawsuit. So moving on to Senate Bill 929. This dealt with nonconformities. It had a lot of very prescriptive standards for notice that we are intending to add to the zoning ordinance, and provides processes for a nonconforming use if it's required to stop operating by a city. So we put in the notice requirements, added language regarding the nonconforming use, simplifying that. And we're also calling an additional public hearing to consider amendments in a separate zoning case, because of the complexity, again, of trying to process that all by this deadline. So House Bill 2439, again, this dates back to 2019. We added some mitigating requirements. We used alternative incentives where we basically were incentivizing people to continue the city's existing landscaping and, I'm sorry, we used actually landscaping as an incentive for people to continue our existing material requirements. Some of our material requirements dated back to the 80s, and we were really concerned about the community's reaction to eliminating material requirements. However, it's really caused a lot of confusion, because the development community has an expectation because of this state law change. So administering the regulations the way they are today is very difficult. So we're looking to basically go back to just comply with the legislature the way it's written and remove those incentives the way they were written because of the complexity that it's causing with the development process. We think it's actually just doing more harm than good. So we were trying to meet the community standards, but we think, again, it's hindering and discouraging reinvestment in some of our older properties, although that was not the intent. So we think it will be beneficial to the community to remove those incentives. So this is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, Guiding Principles, and Land Use Action Number One. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend this unanimously for approval, and we are available for questions, should you have them.
Thank you. Any questions for Christina? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Make a motion. We approve Item Six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item Number Six. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Item number seven, Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance as Requested in Subdivision Ordinance Amendment 2023-2 to amend Article 2 definitions, Article 4 assurance for completion and maintenance of improvements, Article 5 requirements for public improvements, reservation, and design of the subdivision ordinance of the city, Ordinance Number 2017-11-4, is heretofore amended as a result of recent state legislative actions and to ensure compliance with state law, providing a penalty clause, repealer clause, savings clause, severability clause, publication clause, and an effective date.
All right. This is continuing on our theme of updates based on legislative changes, but this is an update to the subdivision ordinance. This is based on House Bill 3699, and it prohibits a municipality from requiring dedication of a future street or alley unless it's intended by the property owner and included and funded in a capital improvement plan. So we needed to make changes to the subdivision ordinance. It also allows plat approval authority to be delegated to staff. We're still discussing how that might be applied and are going to bring that back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further consideration. The good news about this bill, we feel, is it strikes the word "plan" from many areas of Chapter 212, which was- from many areas of Chapter 212, which was a very confusing addition that had happened a few legislative cycles ago that really provides some clarity that was very, a very helpful addition to this bill. So, the subdivision ordinance, we're proposing to amend that to comply with the new street dedication requirement. So the language before you really just goes through, adds some definitions, and also just modifies the language to make it compliant with this provision of the law, ensuring that we are meeting those two standards of street dedication. It was recommended for approval, eight to zero, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? I'll open the public hearing.
We do have one speaker on this item, William Zanstra. He was supposed to be on Zoom, but he is not there, so.
All right.
I think we're good.
I'll close the public hearing, confine the comments to the council.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I just
Sorry.
Want to get a little bit of clarification. Does this have anything to do with the downtown thoroughfare standards? Will that impact anything down there at all?
It, it does. I don't want to say no because it does deal with, I mean, the state law does change requirements for dedicating streets, but I don't think it, it's citywide. It applies citywide. It doesn't have specifically to do with downtown. It has to do with the way the city requires right-of-way dedication throughout Plano.
But since that is something coming up on a future agenda that we'll be discussing, I'm just wondering if, if it is going to impact that since that's coming up, if we might want to wait to discuss it at that time?
Well, what we're doing, I think, with this is, is just simply complying with state law. I don't think anything here is discretionary because it's what the legislature told us that we have to do. Would be, that's my interpretation. I don't think there's anything here that's discretionary.
Okay. I guess this is kind of a general question. If something is on public, item for public comments, public considerations, does that mean that we do have some latitude on it? I guess I'm not understanding why things that we're not required to do, for example, the removing the curfew that was in our consent agenda, why we don't put them in the consent agenda? That's just confusing me a little bit if there's something that.
This one has a public hearing?
Yeah.
And so public hearings can't be done in consent agenda?
Okay.
Things that, items that require a public hearing have to be on individual consideration. Other items that, maybe a text amendment, something like that, that we have that does not require a, a public hearing can go on a consent agenda.
Okay.
It's, it's the difference between the code of ordinances and the zoning and subdivision, which requires public hearings, curfews and code.
Just real quick again, nonconforming roads, I mean, if they're not meeting our current standards, does this affect any of those? Like, those are throughout the entire city.
This, I think what we're trying to do is define what's a future road because the, the current subdivision ordinance, we're, we're adding definitions to ensure that we understand state law, what is a future road? Right now, we didn't have that definition in the ordinance, but that's the language in state law. So we've just added that definition and clarified because it's existing street versus future street. So we know that we're meeting the state law standard of when a future street is dedicated. And then we're ensuring that when that dedication occurs, we're meeting the state law standard that it has to be funded and shown on the capital improvement, or I'm sorry, the community investment program because that's what state law requires. Our current ordinance, the way it stands now, we don't have that language that meets state law that says, right now, we, we require people to dedicate without meeting those standards that are the state law. So you see, if we don't update the ordinance with these changes, we're just saying you have to dedicate right-of-way. We're not saying you only have to dedicate right-of-way if it's on the CIP and it's funded.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second the motion to approve.
I jumped the gun a little while ago, but.
Yeah. So a motion is second to approve agenda item number seven. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item number eight, consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 16-19 fees for zoning, rezoning, and other miscellaneous fees of Article 2, fees generally of Chapter 16, planning and development of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Plano to revise the engineering inspection fee to be consistent with new state law requirements, providing a repealer clause, severability clause, savings clause, and an effective date.
All right, Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering. Like, I was up here a long time ago. So yeah, you're probably seeing the theme by now. Engineering inspection fees has been mandated that we have to revise the way we calculate those. So again, a similar theme, House Bill 3492 is the fee that we're talking about. Basically what it says, and you're more than welcome to go through and read the entire bill, but basically what it says is we cannot charge an inspection fee based on a, the construction cost, which is what we do today. So what we would typically do is a developer comes in, proposes the improvements. We will take the public improvements only, assign a, the construction cost to that, and then develop the inspection fee based on the percentage of that construction cost. The House bill says that we can no longer do that. We have to do the actual cost of our staff to inspect the project. And that bill goes into effect September 1st. So like I mentioned, they have to be, our inspection fees today are calculated based on the public improvements of the installed project. Currently, we charge 4% of the construction cost for the public improvements. So what we have proposed is, again, assigning a rate on an hourly basis with some assistance on what the hours would be based on the project size. We have put in there $100 per hour with a minimum fee of $200. We've also assigned an outside normal business hours. And then we've broken it up into basically our main categories that we have public improvements, grading, paving, sidewalk, drainage, and then water and wastewater. And so what we would do if a developer came in, they would give us a list of their quantities that they have for public improvements. We would take these numbers, assign the number of hours to that project, and then take the rate and multiply that by that. So what we've done is we've taken a couple of existing projects to see how this compares to what we're doing now. So the number you see, again, the formulas we've got there, this project, based on the quantities that we received, would be approximately $15,000 under our current model. And what we actually charged for that was closer to just over $19,000. And again, that's the 4% model at the bottom. The, in the spreadsheet you see there is the $15,000, that's using this new model. And that was a commercial property. This was a residential, again, taking the quantities that we had for the actual project, applying the formula with the new rates, comes up to just over $40,000. And under our current model, over the 4%, we came in at just over $44,000. I'm sure one of the biggest questions is, what is everybody else doing? I've had numerous calls over the last few weeks, as you know, that this was approved earlier this summer. We've had about three or four weeks to digest exactly what's going on. I did some looking through Google, of course, that's the expert for everybody. And pretty much every city that I could find in Texas uses a percentage, whether it's 3.2, 3.5, 4%, like we do. And so I went, okay, well, let me look at some comparisons throughout the nation. I think 99.9% of the rates that I found were based on a percentage. So I have not looked at legislation in other states to see if it's changing. But in the cities that I talked to, which are the local ones here, everybody is essentially scrambling. They do not have a consistency. I've heard people charging on a per acre rate. Somebody has hired a third party to give them a rate, but then they have to assign how they charge that. So as of last Friday, the other cities that I talked to, and again, those are local here, still had not finalized anything. So we're kind of setting the, the market, if you will. And the one thing that the other cities did say from a consistent standpoint is we are going to have to implement a future study to see how this compares to other cities, what we're actually collecting. You know, nobody's in it to, to make a huge revenue on this, but we want to be fair and equitable. So moving forward, the recommendation is to approve these new rates tonight. We will work with a outside consultant to start a study and then fill out the other cities, see what they're doing. And if there's any updates or changes, we'll be back to you guys with those.
Not to drag the evening on, but I do have some questions, Caleb. Thanks for your patience.
Sure, I will do my best.
Okay, not the fact that we, this is, I understand you've got a rate here for hourly rate for there. There's two other costs associated when we're out there doing the inspection. That's one, the transportation cost to come from your office to and from, and the time to get there. And it could be a team. Is that part of the fee structure that you're looking at here? As far as other fees that had to be associated with that? Do we have within this, this law that we can recapture that fee?
So the answer is no, it is not. I know. So what, what we did, there is, and I could show you my spreadsheets. There's about 28 different tabs on it that I, I worked on, tried to develop this fee, essentially. And I talked to Allen, I talked to Frisco, I talked to McKinney, and again, everybody was all over the map. But the, the short answer is no. Because when we read the law, and this is without talking to attorney generals and whatnot, it was the cost to inspect the project. So your question is very valid, and that was my first question. Can we include vehicles? Can we include iPads? You know, work boots, trucks, or hats, shirts, you know, vests, everything else that would go into that. And what, the way it's been interpreted to this point is the cost to inspect, not the equipment needed to inspect, but the cost to inspect. So what I included was inspectors' time, obviously. Inspector has a supervisor, there's review engineers that have roles in that, but anybody that was involved with the inspection process is what I included with that.
Okay, one last question is, and this is really, when you have to go back and do, particularly when we're looking at concrete, you've got cylinder tests. You have to review compression tests on those cylinders. Is this part of that inspection fee also? So do they just send you the reports and you study that? And you just basically are able to charge a quarterly rate to look at those, those fees?
Yeah, and honestly, that's the big challenge because some projects take longer than others. And sometimes that's based on, obviously, the size of the development or the improvements that are going in. But what we don't have in place today is, our inspectors do not track their time. Meaning they don't go to Project A and say, I spent 45 minutes here today. And then I go to Project B in two hours, and so on and so forth. So a task like that, you know, they don't sit down and say, I reviewed this cylinder test and materials test for 30 minutes, and I'm going to put that to Project A. That's what hopefully the study will come up with to do that. But the challenge is, is obviously, they get called out to a site. I need you to come out in here and look at something, you know, whether on the east side, north side, west side, wherever it is. Is it the time driving to that site? Is it the time just on the site? So there's a lot of variables that have, are in play.
Okay, it sounds like you have your tasks before you, but those, from just in general civil, civil engineering and looking at what they have to do with the test, it's a lot of drive time. It's a lot of desk time, but also the inspection time. So we got to figure out how to recover those costs because this could be, this could be a real ding on the revenue. But, thank you, Caleb.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I can't, I can't help myself. So I, I understand, very short. So right now, you set the, the hourly fee at $100 per hour. Is that something that just randomly came up? Or is this something that you calculated based on whatever past history and, and decided this is a fair rate?
So I looked at it numerous ways. Obviously, I compared it based on what, how our fees were being generated. But then I also looked at it from our staff standpoint. So I took our inspector's fee and basically took an average. We have 10 inspectors in our group. And I took an average of how much time they spend, or, I'm sorry, how much their salaries are. And took their hourly rate and said, all right, well, inspector is going to be 100% of the time that's going to be inspecting. So that was a fairly easy one. So I got that hourly rate. But then I took the construction inspector supervisor and the remaining employees and then took a percentage of theirs as well, where a development review manager would be involved with the inspection, but it's not going to be out there every day. So it may be closer to five and basically lined those up. And then, again, kind of compared it to how much time is spent out on the sites, how much infrastructure we've put in. I took the averages over the last five years of how much water lines we've put in and sewer lines, compared them to the rates that we've put in here, and, you know, came up with the rate.
Thank you, that's all I need. Motion approved.
Caleb, just want to say I always appreciate your deadpan delivery.
I try.
Oh, and second.
Was that a motion?
Yes, motion is second to approve agenda item number eight, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
There are no further business, meetings adjourned.